It's 6:00 PM. Welcome to the Thursday, November 13th, Capitola City Council meeting. May I get a roll call, please?
Councilmember Johnson.
Present.
Councilmember Orbach.
Here.
Councilmember Westman.
Here.
Vice Mayor Morgan.
Here.
Mayor Clark.
Here. Everybody please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Additions and deletions to the agenda.
Staff has no changes to the agenda this evening.
Thank you. Report out on closed session.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The City Council met in closed session to discuss the item listed on this evening's agenda. Deliberation occurred. No reportable action was taken. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Number four, additional materials.
Staff received additional materials for tonight's agenda packet. One email was received relating to off-agenda items, so it was included as Item 5. And one email was received out for publication at the agenda packet for Items 7H. Both were included in the packet for public review and distributed to the council before tonight's meeting.
Thank you. Number five, oral communications by member of the public. You'll have up to three minutes to speak on items not on the general agenda.
Hi.
Welcome.
My name is Goran Klapic. I'm a former security guard of Zeldas on the Beach. I've worked the front door with George in the past. In the past, I observed that to the fullest. And I talked about this before, but maybe there was no attention paid to it. But there was cocaine trafficking, and also methamphetamine trafficking going on in the city of Capitola and suburban areas. This is some serious business that I'm talking about here. There was somebody here that I met about this too, not only the chief of Capitola right now. His name was Kilroy. I miss him dearly. Kilroy was a member, I think, of VFW. VFW stands for Veterans of Foreign War. I volunteered for this organization honorably. Thank you very much. Take care.
Thank you. Welcome.
Mr. Mayor, my name is John Vanforth. Council members, I'm here. I live 35 or 30 feet from the Jade Park tennis courts. And I'm here to talk about the pickleball discussion, which you had in September. I wasn't aware of that meeting, so I'm adding a couple of minutes of comments to it. I've lived at that address for over eight years. And I have an ask. I have an explanation for that ask. And I have an explanation for why I would like you to accommodate us as soon as possible on that ask. My ask is, I'd like the council to please remove Jade Park from its consideration of possible pickleball sites as soon as possible. The reason for this is because, and I've sent in a letter, but I didn't realize there was a deadline, so you may have it not in your package. But I've sent in a letter with some materials that describe the kind of uniquely disruptive quality of pickleball noise. The phrase that's used is impulsive pop. And even more than the decibels caused by pickleball players, it's the quality of the pop sound cuts through all the other ambient noise and is, it's impossible to ignore. We hear games in the furthest backcourt from our house, at the front of our house, and we just can't, we go off or put on headphones or something like that. So it's a tremendous imposition on us and our neighbors. You're going to hear from our neighbors as well in the coming days. I ask that you remember that phrase, impulsive pop, because it shows up in the Washington Post article that I included. I sent you a gift link, so you can just click it. There's no paywall. But it's a lot of people who analyze these kinds of, say, noises concede that it's the most disruptive kind of noise. And there's been litigation all over the country, particularly in California, when tennis courts are converted to pickleball because this is so disruptive. Now, why now? I've only got 43 seconds. Now, because this is hanging like a sort of Damocles over us. We have to figure out what we're going to do with our house. We have plans to improve it. We've been improving it. We have grandchildren whom we'd like to accommodate with a slightly bigger house. We can't do any of that as long as, in my view, the house is going to become uninhabitable due to pickleball being put in place. Finally, I should say, there are occasional games played on those tennis courts. That's why I know why this is so disruptive. The city's been great about trying to discourage them. There are tennis-only signs. Now there are no pickleball signs. I want to thank you for doing that. That's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Welcome.
Oh, yeah, Charlie Thomas. I've been a resident 53 years in Capitola. Got to watch a lot of things go on. Been in a lot of committees with the city over the years. And just a couple of recommendations if I made, one of them being, well, number one, thank you very much for changing Bay Avenue and Hill. Okay? I think a lot of people are happy with that. But I think that's my point, is that we have people come in and do studies, traffic studies for us, that don't live in the area. I think had someone in a traffic study on Bay Avenue and Hill Street, it was a local engineering company, and they're, they deal with it every day, you wouldn't have made the error in judgment of letting this kind of a fiasco that took place, which now you've undone. At a cost of, from what I was told by a couple of people in the city, about $50,000 to do it and about $50,000 to undo it. Hundred thousand dollars. Modern, we happen to be going into Capitola, one of the, probably one of our most welcoming streets coming into the city. That street really isn't just for help. And all that money spent on Bay and Hill, I think had we had a local person do that survey, would not have done what they did. And then thirdly, and all, Park Avenue. You guys, I'm glad the police chief is here. You know, people, I'm amazed that we haven't got more police authority on Park Avenue. The people drive so fast on that road. We live there. We watch it every day. And, you know, I will say that my wife and the city work really hard to put this sidewalk in. Amen, it's wonderful. Even though it's sidewalk, because you guys have narrowed the lanes a little bit, with the bike lanes now and the street lanes. People have come out on the road and they're not saying out of the bike lanes. A lot of times, I mean, this happens actually all the time. People are going, you know, 40, 45, 50 miles an hour on that road, and they are. And they're going inside the bike lane. And the bike lane is like two feet off of the sidewalk. I mean, it's crazy. And we've asked for that before. And it seems as though, I have seen a police officer a couple of times with the radar, maybe twice, okay? And hardly ever. And I don't know if you guys make any money on traffic tickets or not. If you do, well, you can put a new reflection pool in without taking 25 grand out of the city, you know? It's crazy how much traffic is on Park Avenue speeding-wise. So I'm just saying for the health of the community, for the kids that are walking up and down nowadays in school, it's crazy enough with the e-bikes, but right now, this is, I really need to see. I'd love to see some radar set up there so I can capture some of that money if you would.
Thank you.
And see all the traffic down. Thank you very much.
Welcome.
Hi, I'm Terry Thomas. I'm here regarding the Flock safety cameras in Capitola, which are actually automatic license plate readers. I appreciate our chief of police doing what she can to protect the information and keeping within the law, though that may not always be possible. It has become apparent that once the data is out in the public domain, it is nearly impossible to limit access or prevent data sharing, no matter what the reason. Security may not be as strong as it should be, considering that Flock is a startup company. Flock's willingness to both work with federal immigration authorities and then to conceal this collaboration from the public should indicate that the company should not be trusted. My questions for the City Council to deal with are, how many suspects of serious crimes or stolen vehicles have been tracked down since the Flock cameras were installed, which is their purpose? If very few to none, do we really need to lease 10 of them? And how much does it cost the city each year to keep them? Big Brother is watching us enough. If we don't need these cameras, let's give them back. And I would also like to say, my husband refuses to walk with me on the sidewalk of Park Avenue if I tell people, yell at people, to slow down. I have offered to purchase two bumps along the residential portion of Park Avenue already, to which I have received no response. Because since the cops can't patrol Capitola, then I would appreciate putting bumps along the residential areas where there are driveways. And I'm willing to pay for them. So please, do something. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor Clark and City Council members. My name is Dana Wagner. I am the Director of Meals on Wheels for Santa Cruz County. This council graciously awarded Meals on Wheels a portion of the City Development Blancurt funding awarded to the city in July of 2023. That grant ended at the end of this September, and I'm here to report on how those funds were spent. The CDBG funds purchased a seven-day breakfast pack and a complete seven-day prepared dinner pack for the residents of Calipatola. From the inception of this grant in July of 2023, Meals on Wheels provided over 40,000 meals, close to 41,000 meals, to 86 vulnerable seniors living in Capitola. Over 18,000 breakfasts and 22,000 dinners. But Meals on Wheels is more than a meal. The Meals on Wheels staff visited with participants 289 times to ensure their optimal health and well-being and to ensure residents were linked to other essential services. Capitola participants shared their gratitude for the services that they received during this grant period. Comments from participants included the following. "The meals have helped me to eat healthier." "Meals on Wheels is a lifesaver." "The program has really helped our budget and to meet our nutritional needs on a limited budget." "And the meals taste good." These are just a few of how important Meals on Wheels has been to Capitola residents. Meals on Wheels has greatly appreciated the opportunity to serve Capitola seniors. With the city's hope, we hope to continue to be able to do this in the future. And thank you so much for that opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, council members. My name is Vic Kamath, representing CRP Affordable Housing. It's great to see you all here again. We were at the Bluffs ground, ribbon cutting the other day. And we truly appreciate your engagement with our project. I'm here this evening requesting that the City Council pull Consent Item 7H for discussion. As you may know, CRP intends to submit a CDBGDR disaster relief application for funding of a 43-unit, 100% affordable project at 3720 Capitola. To submit a complete application, we need a letter of support from either the City Council or city staff confirming the city's support for CRP's pursuit of CDBGDR funding for affordable housing at the site. We submitted preliminary materials for planning consideration about a month ago. And the plans for the 43 proposal, 43-unit proposal were also shared with you through email. At the same time, if we're unable to submit a complete CDBGDR application, our only fiscal-liable alternative would be to pursue an 88-unit version of this project. To that end, we have submitted a SB 330 application reflecting the larger version of this proposed under AB 2011 as a ministerially approved project. Our strong preference will be to move forward with a 43-unit project provided we can secure CDBGDR funding. We respectfully request that the City Council approve a letter of support this evening to enable us to complete our funding application. To clarify, the requested letter does not require endorsement of specific project details, nor does it constitute any form of approval or resolution from the city. It simply needs to state that the City of Capitola supports CRP affordable's pursuit of CDBG disaster relief funding for affordable housing at 3720 Capitola. Our deadline for this application is next Friday on 11/21. We would need this letter of support in hand prior to this date to submit a complete application. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Kathleen Harris, and I'm a seventh-generation Santa Cruzan with family roots stretching back to the early 1700s from Saratoga Springs to Monterey. My ancestors helped build the Great Golden Gate Bridge and the Moffett Field Hangar, and I've spent my entire life serving my community. I'm also proud to say that I was recently approved as a new resident at the Bluffs at 44th, a project that they just opened last week that he just referred to. After decades of instability, this is the first time I've had safe, stable housing in years. But tonight, I'm here because not everyone is being served and given that same chance. There are over 9,000 families still waiting for affordable housing in our county, and yet the city talks about supporting housing while refusing to actually support it when real opportunities come forward. My own journey shows what that gap looks like in real life. After the '89 earthquake destroyed our accessible home, my husband, who used a wheelchair, was forced to sleep in the front seat of our station wagon for months because accessible units weren't available through the vouchers from the Red Cross and FEMA. He later lost his legs to gangrene from the conditions that we were forced to live in. And even recently, when I applied for the Bluffs, I was almost disqualified because a one-time settlement check for toxic water exposure was counted as income instead of what it really was, a reimbursement for damage and debt that contributed to both my husband and my father's deaths. These systems are not designed for real people trying to survive. For the past 20 years, I've worked and volunteered throughout the community. For the past twenty years, I've worked and volunteered throughout the community, in the jails, the treatment rehab centers, and the family resource centers, always asking, what is working well for you right now? Tonight, I'm asking the same questions to you all. The Bluffs is proof that thoughtful, accessible, affordable housing works. It changed my life. But one project isn't enough. We need more. Our residents need more, and the city needs to stop saying it supports housing while blocking the very projects that would save lives. I'm standing here with grit and perseverance and lived experience. Tell me what I can do to help. I'll pick up a shovel if I have to. But we can't wait any longer to build the housing our community desperately needs. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Good evening, mayor, council. My name is Alberto Guardado, affiliated to CRP Affordable Housing. I'm here to just ask for the support of any production of affordable housing. I had a sign at the Bluffs before it was built at four-four-zero, one right in the corner. It had my face and my personal cellphone number. And normally, I don't ever come up to speak to council, but this is the one town that I got a lot of calls from, and had plenty of good conversations. People tell me about their lives, their families. Unfortunately, a lot of them would tell me that their kids won't be able to live here. They couldn't even buy their own home, and they wanted to again. A lot can be done in support, and in a thoughtful way, too. As Vic pointed out, if CRP chooses to go SB three-thirty, that's not a thoughtful way, obviously. You know, we all understand that. But in order to move things forward, you've got to work together. As I traveled throughout the state to see communities come together, the ones that go hand in hand can build thoughtful, affordable housing. It's not a perfect system. I know it's not. I know. But if you do nothing, that's how state senate bills and assembly bills that keep pushing, that can push down onto the communities happen, because we just do nothing. And then eventually, your hands will be taken from them, and then we just get to build them. That's not a good way to do this. It's just not. So I ask, please, you know, support affordable housing. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Hi. Good evening, mayor, council members. My name's Katie Thompson, and I'm executive director of Save Our Shores. And I'm here tonight to urge Capitola to stand with our region in the fight to protect our coastline from renewed threats of offshore drilling and emerging risks like seabed mining. The federal administration is expected to release its new five-year outer continental shelf drilling plan any day now. All indications show that California will be a target for new leasing areas, including areas adjacent and possibly even within the Monterey Bay National Marine Sanctuary. On a separate track, the administration is also pushing to open seabed mining, an industry with enormous and still poorly understood impacts on marine ecosystems, fisheries, and coastal economies. Across the bay, the city and county of Santa Cruz have already taken a strong unified action, and historically, Capitola has long been a part of this legacy. You already have an ordinance on the books that prohibits onshore infrastructure related to offshore oil operations, but this moment requires strengthening it, updating it to address new legal challenges, new technologies such as seabed mining, and the aggressive federal posture we expect in the coming plan. We at Save Our Shores are working with other jurisdictions to modernize these ordinances, and we hope Capitola will join. I urge the council to, one, publicly oppose the forthcoming federal plan; two, strengthen Capitola's existing ordinances to include seabed mining and updated legal protections; and, three, join the regional coordination effort to ensure Monterey Bay stands united. Capitola has shown time and time again that small cities can lead in very big ways. By acting now, you won't just be protecting our coastline, you'll be setting the standard for coastal resilience and local courage across California. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Hi. Thank you. Good evening, mayor and council members. My name is Jennifer Gallagher, and I live on Bold Avenue, just steps away from the proposed project site at three-seven-two-zero Capitola Road. I'm here tonight because I'm deeply concerned that this item, a request for city endorsement of a major housing development, was placed on the consent agenda at the last minute with no opportunity for impacted residents to understand what the city is being asked to support. I believe that approving support under these conditions is not routine, and it seems extremely irresponsible to me. A few of my specific issues include there's no traffic study or safety analysis whatsoever. So Capitola Road, as many of you know, is already one of the most congested corridors in Capitola. The intersection at Forty-First and Capitola is gridlocked on a daily basis, and Bold Avenue is a very narrow residential street. To endorse a four-story project, or the implied alternative, a six-story, eighty-eight-unit one, without any traffic or safety study feels reckless to me. You cannot responsibly support density without understanding impacts to the residents who live on these streets every day. I believe that the request pressures the city by presenting a false choice. The developer's letter, as I read it, essentially says, "Approve this tonight, or we will pursue an even bigger, denser project." To me, that should never be how land use decisions are made in Capitola. It feels coercive, and it undermines the integrity of the planning process. The city is being asked to support something with zero public process. This is the first time many of us are seeing these materials post the day before the meeting. They don't include a traffic study, design review, CQ, planning commission discussion. I just don't think a consent agenda item should be used to shortcut community review. And I also believe that a letter of support is actually a substantive action. The email claims that the support doesn't obligate the city, but in reality, once the city signs a support letter, the project will appear to state and federal agencies as something Capitola endorses in concept. It will be used to strengthen the grant application, and the community will be told later that the city already expressed support. I just think this sets a dangerous precedent. Affordable housing is absolutely important, but transparency, safety, and good governance are equally important, and I don't think you can make a sound decision with no information. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Hello. Good evening. My name is Angie Deans, also from Bold Avenue, and I'm actually reading a letter on behalf of one of our neighbors that are unable to attend. We understand Consent Agenda Item 7H, previously pulled from consideration, was asked to be put back on the council's agenda for today, which is a last-minute request from the property developer for thirty-seven-twenty Capitola Road. This did not allow those of us in the affected Bold Avenue neighborhood to comment and to be included in the board packet on this proposal, to have the city sign off on a grant approval letter tentatively agreeing to the proposed development. Given the last-minute nature of the request, at three-thirty-nine yesterday, with a four P.M. deadline to be included in the packet, along with the preliminary plans submitted for both the forty-three and eighty-eight unit developments, for the larger one being threatened under SB three-thirty if the developer doesn't get the approval letter, we believe that this item should be reviewed by city staff first and submitted for discussion as regular agenda item in subsequent city council meeting. While we acknowledge the rights of the developer to build on their property, we feel this is a sneaky attempt to circumvent the neighborhood concerns, which have already been presented in previous meetings, that should be legitimately aired and considered. We appreciate the partnership that you guys have had with us, and we look forward to continue to work with you guys. We've appreciated the council's consideration of its neighbors in the past. And again, moving forward, we would like to be included in the discussions and have the information presented. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, city council. My name is Vic Klausert. I live at the Bromer end of Bold Avenue. I've been there since nineteen eighty-five, raised my kids there, and it's been a fairly doable neighborhood. But I'll just bring up a couple of things that still stand out as making it very difficult to envision of the large project that is proposed at the other end, close to Capitola Road. I've said this before, the street is extremely narrow. We have to pull over into a parking spot on several areas of the street to let another car pass. To consider having increased traffic come up Bold from the Bromer side is going to impact all the neighbors greatly. We don't even have sidewalks on a good deal of Bold Avenue, so you're kind of forced off the safe path into the dirt and weeds when that happens. So my two cents on this is that I feel it's premature to approve an application in which the developer is not required to divulge all of the impacts that this development will have on the community that we've developed with all the neighbors on Bold Avenue. And it also seems like the developer wants to circumvent the expected due process of going through the normal processes in which the city council can hear all of the impact that this development will have on our neighborhood. Furthermore, as we look at the language used, it seems like the developer is saying, if you don't give us what we want on this first request, we're going to come at you harder with a bigger development with twice as many units and no increase of parking. It feels like coercion, and it feels like bullying. I plead with the city council to consider the neighbors on Bold Ave to make the developer to follow the proper protocol to protect our rights. Thank you.
Thank you. If I could just ask folks to keep the applause down for a little bit, because I want to welcome everybody with all different views. If we could do that, that'd be awesome. Welcome.
My name's Michael. I'm a resident over on Bold Avenue. I'm here with probably like twenty other people representing Bold and thirty-seven-twenty Capitola Road should be called like sixteen-hundred Bold Avenue, you know, because of its ingress points there. There was some talk on affordable housing, and I don't think anyone here is against affordable housing. You know, our economy is very strong here, and so, you know, I myself have two very young kids, so the idea of them being able to afford a place when they get older is, you know, is like the forefront of my mind. But to have someone come and say, I'm going to build a four-story unit on your front doorstep without any communication with you or any regard to the impact of your quality of life, it's not, it isn't the way to build a good community and a strong community. And then to do it outright, of, you know, if you don't approve this four-story, then we're going to build it bigger, so, you know, approve our smaller plan, you know, it's talk for affordable housing, but, you know, they are going to make this a substantial profit, you know, while completely affecting the quality of life of the residents on Bold Avenue. Yeah, like I said, you know, I have a five-year-old and a six-month-old. I'm teaching my daughter how to ride a bike, and our Bold Avenue is a very quiet street. Building a four-story complex on the end of our road would increase deliveries, increase, like our trash, increase cars parking on our street, like, it's, so I think, you know, we are requesting an impact study be done for everyone to fully understand how this is going to affect the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
I'm Susan Steely, another Bold Street resident, and I just wonder, I know some of you are new, some I've seen, but have you all been down Bold? Have you driven down it? You know that you have to cross the yellow line to pass a parked car? So what I'm saying, the street itself is not similar to the Bluff situation, where you can't have overflow parking and additional traffic. Our street just doesn't accommodate it for safety reasons. But in summary, I took it one step farther. I think with all these developments of affordable housing, we support, just like you do. Like, if you're going to look at the mall, the seventeen-hundred, this one with Mr. V. Bernardo, and it developed sixteen-ten Bold Avenue into another large development area, I think you've got to look at the traffic flow and all the repercussions of these. Because once these guys get done, they're going to leave you with whatever disaster traffic that we have, and then the other people will have to solve it. So I think you have to look at it all, because that's a lot of traffic, a lot more input into a community you want to make accessible to people, but it won't be accessible because it's so congested. So I say, thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor Clark and council members. Heidi Kellison, I'm a resident of Capitola. I'm here tonight because of the federal administration's proposal on offshore drilling, and I would like us to participate as part of the regional process that is underway. That process is very similar to what occurred back in the eighties, and this council passed unanimously, that council then passed unanimously five-zero for the current law on the books. So as part of the process, I just encourage you to agendize the issue so that the community may be fully informed and also provide feedback. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. My name's Caroline. I also live on Bold Avenue. Born and raised here in Santa Cruz, and so grateful to be here still, and I definitely commiserate with people who are struggling to find affordable housing, as I've been a renter here for a long time as well, and it can be really, really, really challenging. But there are a few things that I find pretty troubling about the proposed development, and I think, like, I would say the main things for me are just that there are processes in place that are there for a reason, specifically like the traffic study and like safety. Those are like the biggest, biggest ones for me, just because we do have small children on the street, and it's really not, like, it's not very wide, like, you've heard what people say about it. And there's really no other parking options in the area for, like, not on Thirty-Eighth Avenue, so it would probably fall on us. And I do also feel pretty uncomfortable, like, with the last-minuteness of this, too, and the sort of, as people have said, coercive, you know, we're going to do it bigger if you don't, if you don't take this deal, that just doesn't really feel right to me. And so, again, like, I really do, I do see this town, it's going to change, it might get louder, it's going to grow, but I think that we do really have to respect, like, a safety study and, you know, the processes that we have in place for longevity. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Becky Steinbruner. I actually live in rural Aptos, but I'm here to speak with you tonight. I want to support everything that the people from the residents of Bold Avenue have asked you to do here tonight. I hope you will pull that Consent Item 7H and really have a good discussion here. What I want to speak to you about is that the Santa Cruz County Board of Supervisors will be considering approval of a countywide new battery energy storage system, or BES ordinance, for large grid-scale projects. They will be considering this next Tuesday, November eighteenth, at their board meeting. It's a one-thirty P.M. hearing, and I urge you all and those, anyone listening, to participate in that. It would allow large, and I mean, three hundred metal storage containers- It would allow large, and I mean 300 metal storage containers filled with flammable, explosive lithium-ion batteries to be positioned in neighborhoods, not considering subdivisions, neighborhoods, affordable housing, to be considered as sensitive receptors that would preclude them from being any closer than 100 feet away. You can find the ordinance as it is written on the county's new website by searching for Santa Cruz County BES, and that's Bravo Echo Sierra. Sierra, it stands for Battery Energy Storage System Ordinance. And you will find the draft ordinance. It is woefully weak on public safety. I'm very concerned. And we need to support those in our community who would suffer from these projects being very close to their homes, schools. There is one project already in permitting process in Watsonville, in, next to affordable housing Shapiro Knowles and a very dense neighborhood, College Lake, nearby the Santa Cruz County Fairgrounds, our county's evacuation center. And we need to stand up for these people. We need to stand up for all people. There are non-lithium alternatives available and we need to speak out at the Board of Supervisors meeting and demand that this is the technology. Not dispelling the need for battery energy storage at all, but that the lithium technology is unacceptably risky to public health and safety and to our responders and the environment when non-lithium, non-flammable, non-explosive technology exists. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any further public comment? Seeing none, I'll bring us back to staff comments.
Staff has no comments this evening.
Thank you. I'll take it to city council members' comments, and I'll start on this end.
Sorry, I think we do have...
We have another staff comment first, thank you.
Hi, sorry about that. Tomorrow, our draft code for the Capitola Mall will be published, so I just want, our website will be updated with the draft language and I just want to make sure you and the public is aware. Thank you.
Thank you. Staff, our council members' comments.
Thank you very much. Just last week, I attended the RTC meeting. We were, a grant that our staff wrote, we are gonna be receiving $500,000 for the Bay Avenue corridor study. Also during deliberations amongst commissioners, they also allocated additional $100,000 to the city for sidewalk infill projects, which was nice to see. Just a couple of things to point out. Sip and stroll is this weekend. I understand that a lot of new boutique wineries are gonna be participating, and so hopefully we have a good turnout and support that amazing function that goes on to support the BIA. And then a couple other things to point out, oh, just going back to also at the RTC, there was a motion, it was approved unanimously, that the Murray Street Bridge will be used now in a temporary fashion for a pathway pending city council approval in Santa Cruz. Going back to that, a couple point out, a couple thank yous. Frank out of our Public Works Department, I've seen him out in about the last couple weeks replacing street signs, which are amazing to see those going up and refreshing some of our community streets. And then just a shout out to Matt, who's our operations supervisor. I will CC it on an email about his amazing turnaround, about a community member complaining about a pothole, I think it was on a Saturday or Sunday. He responded over the weekend and took care of it and they were very appreciative and I think we all CC'd on that. And then also another email that I received with an update about a new organization that's working in Capitola. Sounds like it's a nonprofit called Community Counts Efforts, and they provided us a list of organizations they had just gone out to donate money to. And I think there's a press release that's coming out, and it's just nice to see again Capitola and local community members coming together, supporting needs in different ways. Some of the things that they point out were the junior lifeguard programs, they looked at Mid-County Senior Center, there was projects over at New Brighton Middle School, Cabrillo College, and Orange Fourth, and there'll be, the press release is out, clearly states it. So again, appreciate the shout out to that group, again, doing dynamic things in our community and making Capitola even more of a special place. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you Katie and Heidi for your comments. As we have all seen, this administration is clawing back environmental protections that we have fought for for decades. Now the U.S. Department of Interior's Bureau of Offshore Energy Management is proceeding with a new five-year plan for oil in federal waters and has stated that national marine sanctuaries like ours in the Monterey Bay are not necessarily off the table. They intend to open California coast to oil drilling lease sales for the first time in decades. In 1987, councilmembers Stephanie Harlan and McRue championed the ordinance prohibiting offshore oil development, support facilities within the city of Capitola by unanimous council vote. Now's our time. Now's the time that we take action to update and revise our ordinance and be proactive about adding language to protect our ocean from offshore oil and seabed mining. I see this as a proactive approach to prevent catastrophic environmental harm. I'd like to request that this be added to our agenda in January for discussion. In addition, I just wanted to remind members of the community that there will be a food distribution event happening at New Brighton Middle School, put on by Second Harvest Food Bank, tomorrow at between 3:30 to 4:30. It's open to the whole community in a first-come, first-served basis. Thanks.
I actually don't have much tonight. The two items I was gonna talk about was trying to put something on the agenda in January, and Councilmember Orbach has already done that. And since we need two people now to put an item on the agenda, I would like to support us doing that in January. And also wanted to mention and thank again my councilmembers for putting Bay Avenue back to the way it was. Certainly seems to be working for the community. And, you know, I appreciate that when the changes were made, I think the council's intent was good. Sometimes we do something and it doesn't quite work out the way we anticipate it's going to. And I think the more important thing is that we have a council that's willing to say, well, we tried something and it's not working, so let's change it. So I appreciate working with all of you on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome, everybody. I will piggyback on what Councilmember Westman was talking about with the Bay-Hill intersection. I want to thank our Public Works team for facilitating the reconfiguration. You know, we've gone through much consideration on this one topic and very aware that this was the favored outcome. I just want to reiterate that all these trials that came out of this situation stemmed from major safety concerns. That's where I came from when we were developing these different ways to maneuver throughout that intersection. So that being said, I just hope that drivers, cyclists, pedestrians alike, everybody that uses that area, to obey the traffic rules and be alert as possible. These days, it's getting dark very early. I just urge people to be respectful and accountable so that, so I hope everybody would support me in moving in that direction. Also, last meeting, we received the presentation from Second Harvest Food Bank CEO Erica Chavez. It's very clear that in this respect of benefits that are very uncertain at this time, I would like to encourage our community to support, maybe donate time, efforts, whatever it may take, supporting this food bank during this time. Holidays, winter months can be really hard, and this is a way that you can help local families that are in need. I do know of a few businesses that are giving out free meals to children that have lost their benefits. I know Woodworm Party Store has a reserve market, no questions asked. If you need food, go and get what you need. And please just continue to spread the love, and that's what Capitola does best. So support me in that. And, oh, one thing that I would like is, if it hasn't been brought up for the November Town Hall, which is next Thursday night at New Brighton Middle School, if we could please have an update on the Park Avenue traffic calming? I forget if that was on our list, just because we had a few people talk about it this evening. So maybe if there's an update on that, or if you have one now, or we could discuss it on the 20th, whatever.
I can take a look. The agenda is pretty well set for the 20th. The Park Avenue traffic project, the bike lane is done. There is still a speed display sign pending, so that is pending and that will be installed as part of that project coming up here, I think in the next three months. Yeah, I see that from the back of the room. That will complete that project.
Got it, okay.
That's one of those, the solar speed...
Yeah, the radar, okay. Great, thank you. I just wanted to touch on that, just since we did hear from a few people on that, and I do know that area can be a little dicey. All right, I think that's all. Oh, and I will definitely second your request for the agendized item as well. Thank you.
Great, great comments from everybody. I do like to echo the agenda item for me seeing in January. It's great to know that we can do something about our Monterey Bay sanctuary and reinforcing some of our standards and laws, so looking forward to that in January. And I also like to shout out, for the 10th year of Plan Aire, all last week, we had our small little town here in Capitola blessed with a bunch of really talented artists. They were here for a whole week, through good weather, bad weather. It was a really good showing, people came from all over the western United States. Our fellow councilmember was gracious enough to host one of the artists from Texas?
From Texas.
Texas. So, great, great project all in all. Looking forward to it again next year. That's all I have. Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor, just one thing, I just want to make sure I address the nonprofit, if Capital Cares, I want to make sure, if I didn't say the exact name correctly, I want to just make sure.
Capital Cares?
Capital Cares.
Thank you. That brings us to item seven, consent items. Looking for a motion, or if there is any items that councilmember would like to pull.
I would like to pull 7H for discussion. With that, I can approve consent...
Do you have another one?
I'm sorry, I'd like to pull 7F.
Okay, I will approve consent items A, B, C, D, E, and G. I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Consent items are passed. We both hear H and F at the end of our regular agenda. That brings us to item eight, general government public hearings. A, annexation feasibility study analysis report.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I'm gonna introduce Jim Simon with RSG. Jim is the contractor the city selected to complete the scope of work. This, as by way of background, was an assignment that we received from LAFCO, the local agency formation commission. The last time, they looked at the services that the city offered, they asked the city to prepare a study about its sphere of influence and determine if the sphere of influence made sense or that the city would be considering future annexations. So we used some of our funds, partnership with LAFCO, who threw some money in, and hired RSG to complete the study. And with that, I'm gonna turn this over to Jim, who is gonna talk to us about his findings in the study. Take it away, Jim.
Okay, thank you, Jamie. This is Jim Simon. I am president and principal of RSG that worked on this assignment. We're gonna go ahead and walk you through kind of our work that we did for this, as was mentioned. In the municipal service review that LAFCO prepared, there was a recommendation that the city conduct this annexation study to ascertain the city's long-term plans for potentially annexing this area that has been long within the city's sphere of influence. For a matter of context, that sphere of influence, which is up here on the screen, really comprises three areas, a majority of which are on the west side of the city. What we've broken down to the Pleasure Point area, which is one component area, the North Study area, which is a second area north of Pleasure Point, and a third area near the state beach park on the east side of the city. That was not studied for this purpose. You see here on the screen kind of a breakdown of population of these areas relative to the city. The unincorporated areas comprise about 8,200 residents and approximately a little over one square mile compared to the city. It's about half the size in geographic area, but much more comparably sized to the population of the city. This slide kind of shows you the services that we took a consideration of. Not all services when an annexation takes place are moved to a city. The primary services that would be impacted would be law enforcement, parks and recreation, lighting, street and road maintenance, and solid waste management. Most of these services would come over to the city, would have the responsibility for funding those activities if and when annexes take place. And so, what we do, then what we then we did is now analyze sort of the land use breakdown of the area, the demographics of the area, things of that sort. Some important things to note on this side is, the first column in this table labeled "city" shows you the existing size of the city, population, households, persons per square mile, and population density, if you will. A daytime population, which basically reflects the business community as well as residents, and total assessed value. And then the combined standard area is both the north and Pleasure Point city areas combined as implied. And you see kind of the relative size of those areas. One thing that you'll kind of note, and it's definitely evident in the graph to the left of the screen, is that the population density of the unincorporated area within the sphere of influence is quite a bit higher than the rest of the city. And despite the fact that it's much smaller of a geographic area and that doesn't have as many businesses. So we're first gonna talk about the potential revenues that would come from annexation under the city's master property tax agreement with Santa Cruz County. We estimate the city would collect approximately 6%, 5.94% of the property taxes from the county through annexation. Those come from a combination of the county general fund, as well as some of the CSAs, county service areas, that would be dissolved and those services moved over to the city. So it reaches a total of about 6%. That percentage is again set forth under a formula that was negotiated several years ago in the master property tax agreement that applies to any annexation by the city and the county, or within the county. Property taxes aside, most of their tax revenues that come into play really transfer over based upon the activity that is taking place within the area. So for example, sales tax, that would come from any businesses that have taxable retail sales. Tax rate occupancy tax, that would come from vacation rentals, as well as any hotels within the area. Document transfer tax, that's when properties transfer over and what those taxes are. Franchise fees, the cannabis retail taxes that the city would be levying at their rates as opposed to what the county has. Business license, other permits... Uh, business license, other permits, uh, fines and forfeitures, um, really correspond to population-based, you know, costs, uh, revenues that, that come to the city. Um, all total, just for the North Study area, that equals about $3 million of annual revenues to the general fund if this area was part of the city today. Um, by comparison, uh, the city general fund itself is about $17.9 million of revenue. Um, so that's, uh, a, you know, a small increase in the amount of revenue, uh, from that area. We then move over to looking at that same information for the Pleasure Point area, which is the area south of the northern portion of the study area, which, um, it was 3 million, a little over $3 million of total revenues. The revenues in that portion of the area, uh, property taxes are higher, but other taxes are some of lower. So the total tax revenues on an annual basis would be about 3, uh, 2.4 million dollars as you see here. And then we combine those two areas to illustrate that, um, if you added both of these together, um, 5.4 million dollars of additional revenues coming into the city, uh, which would increase the general fund to about $23.3 million, um, in revenue. Now, while that seems, you know, significant on the surface, you have to also reflect on the fact that we're talking about a significant change in population and service area. Um, so, you know, again, the combined study area would see a 30% increase in general fund revenues, but an 85% increase in population and services demands, uh, from, um, those residents. Uh, and you'll see, we also did similar analysis, if you just looked at the North Study area as well as the Pleasure Point Study area. Revenues relative to the population and service demands, um, definitely do not align. Um, there's, there's a significant difference there. We did also consult with the city on, uh, and, and, and looked at what areas of service would we expect to see most impacted, those really associated around three key areas of, of services, obviously law enforcement, uh, provided by the city police department. Um, you know, the expectation that there would be, uh, a, you know, a significant increase in calls for service, 22% over what the city generates today. Uh, streets, that's primarily street maintenance, not capital projects, that's separate from, uh, this analysis, a 58% increase in that. And then, uh, parks and recreation services, uh, just simply be taking on additional park facilities that are located within the study areas. Um, this does not include one-time capital park public works projects, for example, to bring public infrastructure up to the city's standard or deal with obsolescence and things of that sort, or as well as increase in other personnel in various departments. So as a result, um, we're, uh, not recommending that the city, um, proceed with, uh, annexation of these study areas, uh, given the acute difference between revenues relative to the cost of services and impacts that that would be faced by the city. And I'm happy to answer any questions, uh, you may have.
Before we go into questions, I think one, one point that's worth noting is that the scope of work with RSG actually included a lot more work around the expenditure side of the table. We actually, when we got this, these preliminary findings about kind of these overall ratios, um, Jim and I spoke and we put sort of the pause on that final, that next step of how much more work would it be because the numbers were so out of whack, a 51% increase in that north area, or I want to say, um, 17% revenue. It just, they weren't kind of in the ballpark where the next step would have involved interviewing department heads and sort of generating real-time sort of costs of what it would take to incorporate these areas into the city. So I just did want to note that for the record.
Thank you. And thank you, Jim. That was very informational. Um, we'll take it to council questions.
I don't have any questions at this time. I'll wait to hear from the public.
Another question I have, um, you said that this was, um, came from like a, a LAFCO and city initiative, uh, a venture to study this? Is that correct?
Yes, so this, so Local Agency Formation Commission is the agency that's responsible for sort of administering all the governments in the county. Um, and by administering, I don't mean they don't oversee us, but they help, uh, help kind of make sure that everyone's boundaries line up correctly. So LAFCO, which is their acronym, is responsible for preparing what are called municipal service reviews for every government entity within the county. I want to say it's every five years, it might be every seven years. I think Joe Serrano with LAFCO is here and he could correct that for us, correct that, um, if I'm incorrect on that. And in their last municipal service review for Capitola, they said, hey, Capitola, one of the things we noticed is that your sphere of influence is really big. It goes all the way to Romeo Gulch to the west. And is that really the appropriate sphere of influence? Because a sphere of influence is intended to signal to all the other government agencies around you that that's an area that you intend on incorporating, you know, annexing into your city limits. So they said, please look at that area between now and your next municipal service review. So that was a couple of years ago. So this is a follow-up on that, on that study.
And then just the funding, it looks like we were at 30,000 and they were at 15, but we didn't spend, expend all that, those dollars. Is that correct?
That is correct. I'm not sure exactly how much was left on the RSG contract, not a huge amount. I think the work was going to fall back on the city more to start doing more department head work, department level work around costs. Yes, the 30 and the 15 is, is the correct number.
Okay, thank you.
No more council questions? We'll take it out to public comment. Welcome.
Thank you. My name is Becky Steinbruner. I attend LAFCO meetings regularly and I remember when the city asked for some financial help to do this study and I thought it was very interesting that LAFCO supported that, um, paying $15,000 of the cost. So when I saw this happening, um, before you tonight, I was very interested, uh, to see that the recommendation was actually just to turn it back to LAFCO and let them decide what to do. Now, I hope that Mr. Serrano will, um, weigh in on this. Hopefully he is here. But I remember the 2022 LAFCO Service and Sphere Review, um, report that prompted this work that you've been asked to do. And Mr. Serrano's, um, recommendation, um, was merely, and this is, um, you can look it up on the, um, Santa Cruz County LAFCO site under Sphere Review, Sphere Reviews. Um, this is from page 19 of that report, Annexation Plan. And it was a recommendation that the city should develop a plan to determine when the areas within its sphere boundary should be annexed into Capitola. If no plan is submitted prior to their next service review cycle, which will be May of 2027, it is every five years, you are correct. Then the commission should consider reducing the sphere boundary to better reflect the city's future growth. So that's what he was asking and that's what prompted this report. Now, if you, you do look at the, um, map of the city's boundaries, it is pretty crazy on that western side. And LAFCO's job is to, um, eliminate, um, or to better serve the people of those areas with clear, clearly defined boundaries. And that's what the sphere of influence line is. I think that you should take a look at this and really determine whether or not that you want to reduce the sphere of influence or to go ahead and, and annex these areas of the unincorporated areas. I'm, um, uncomfortable with the percentages in your, your consultant's study here that give no dollar amounts, um, on the key impacts to expenses. There are no dollar amounts. Percentages, I think, are deceptive and I think you should, um, request that better level of information. I will leave with you, um, part of the LAFCO report that, uh, is the, a record of the city's past boundary changes, just for your information. I, I found it quite interesting and, um, I urge you to continue.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'll give you this as well.
Any further public comment? I'll bring it back for council deliberation.
Well, I, I personally agree with the staff's recommendation on this, that, you know, we don't proceed further. I think that the finances for the city of Capitola are going to be quite difficult over the next, you know, five, seven years, um, because we have in the past been so dependent on revenue from retail and sales tax dollars and we're going to have to be looking at, um, new ways to generate money. So I wouldn't like to see us put ourselves in a position where, uh, we're taking on, um, another rather large burden without the ability to continue to pay for the services that we want to provide for, uh, the citizens in our town.
Thank you.
I'm in agreeance with that. Thanks.
On this side.
I also agree. I mean, this, um, would almost double the Capitola's population numbers just don't seem to pan out. I think, I mean, if we annex, we'd have a lot more residents to service and we'd be forced to expand our workforce and we wouldn't have the funds to cover for all of the services that are needed. So at this point, I agree with the recommendation that we should, um, not proceed.
I agree, same comments. I don't think it's something that we should proceed in, at this time.
Thank you for the comments. I, I agree. I think that Pleasure Point's probably the gem of Santa Cruz County. I don't think they would be willing to give it up, but, uh, that's just my thoughts. So we do not need to vote on this. We just need to give direction for.
Do we have to make a motion?
No.
Okay.
Direction to city staff and the city manager to, um, share the run, analysts analyzing the report. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Jim.
So I'm going to call an audible. If, oh, did you need to, I'm going to call an audible. How many people are here for the items that were pulled, either H or F? Can you guys raise your hand? I, I figured it was probably pretty much everybody in the room. So, um, I think I'm going to go on ahead and, and not do item B next, but we'll do item F and then item H. So we'll call item F on the consent that was pulled.
So I'll provide just a really, I'll provide a concise staff report, but our public works director is here to answer any further questions. Um, this item is on the agenda as a follow-up to our prior item, which was to move, directs council direction to move forward with initial engineering, uh, topographic surveys for the failed sections of Grand Avenue to determine what a construction of a new trail, what that would entail, whether that could be work that potentially could be done by citizen advisory, citizen volunteer group, or whether it was going to need to be professional contractors doing the work. So this item has followed back up on your agenda. I think it's a $13,000 phase one, which was a little bit less than the initial estimate. Um, and the item is to adjust the budget to move the funding from proposed taking 22% from the Monterey Park Playground project, the council put $10,000 towards and then 22% toward the Esplanade Park design so that the project is overall revenue neutral. Without, I'm available for questions.
Great. Council of questions?
Uh, yeah, I asked for this item to be pulled. Um, I would like to, um, see if we can push this to our December meeting and by that time we would have, uh, a finalized report of where we are in sales tax, um, reports come in and what the actuals are and also, um, come back with additional, also others, um, possibilities of funding of the $13,000. And at the same time, um, understanding that $13,000 was a potential start just to do the TOPO and then there could be additional, I think it was projected, if I remember correctly at the meeting, it could be up to $50,000. And so, um, what would be the proposed measure of funding those two next things? But I think understanding where we are from the sales tax measure standpoint and having those, uh, receipts in hand before, um, we proceed with, um, looking at where the funding for that to come from, uh, and have some backup options of where else we can look for different, uh, funding mechanisms to afford that. I, that's what something I would like to further, um, discuss in review.
So you're simply asking for this to be continued to our next meeting? Is that what I'm hearing?
Yeah, I just wanted to get that.
So we have sales tax numbers. Okay, thank you. Just wanted to be clear, I understood.
Any other questions?
I mean, from what I remember from our last discussion, I think the estimate was $40,000 and I think this recent report says it's $47,000, which is more than the $40,000 estimate. I am also concerned about costs and where we're going to find the money to do this. And I do have other concerns in terms of whether doing something will increase our liability of the city, right? To lawsuits in the future from the residents who own those homes along those two blocks. Um, and, you know, perhaps this is not the time to ask our attorney these questions. Um, we will continue that discussion for December.
So do we need to make a motion to continue?
I'd like to add in on that though. I was wondering at this point, since we're just talking about where we're going to get the funding, can we still move forward on the project without knowing exactly where we're going to get the funding, but knowing that we have to get this done?
I think as a city manager, I would be remiss in suggesting that we move forward without identifying a funding source. So there's an option that's outlined in the staff report. Um, the good news is that Esplanade Park, the 50K, we did get the $275,000 Coastal Conservancy, well, we believe we're going to receive a $275,000 Coastal Conservancy grant. Um, so there, that project can still move forward and the 10K for Monterey Park wasn't enough to start moving a project forward beyond sort of public outreach, which could still happen with $8,000.
I'm just concerned with the rain we're having now, further erosion, that the longer we wait, it might turn into a bigger problem, but I guess we'll wait till December.
When, you said we're most likely getting the 275,000. Is there like an idea of when we'll actually know?
I think now I do need my public works director's help.
Sorry.
In general, we try not to announce the receipt.
I know. That's why I'm trying to be clear.
So we got a notice from the Coastal Conservancy staff at the end of last week that that grant is being recommended for funding, so that has to go to their board. They meet quarterly, their next meeting is in February.
Okay, thank you.
And just to clarify my comments, my comments are not worried about the project. I'm totally supportive of the project. It was just about how the funds are going to come in and looking at them because I have, I personally have, uh, concern on it. Um, we go through a process of our CIP, uh, project budget, we approve those and then soon as a project that we had on Grand Avenue that we're completely aware of, before we did the CIP, that, that would be the funding mechanism that was recommended. So that's where my concern came from. So total supportive of the project. Um, and I just want to look at where we are for sales tax revenue to see if there's alternate, some additional funds in that potentially.
Okay, I'm going to try and make a motion one more time.
Do we need to go to public comment first?
You're, you're correct.
Would anybody like to make comment on this item? Seeing none, we will now go to deliberation. Thank you.
I would like to make a motion that we continue this item to our December meeting. And when the item comes back, we have information on funding options, if there, um, what's available, because we will know our sales tax numbers. And also that we include a report from the city attorney, uh, about, uh, concerns as far as liability for the city doing work there.
I'll second.
A first and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. That'll bring us to consent item H. Do we have someone that's going to speak? Thank you, Katie.
Thank you. Um, I'm sorry, I don't have a PowerPoint for you this evening, but we did re, um, receive a request for 3720 Capitola Road for a letter of support for a grant application. for 3720 Capitola Road for a letter of support for a grant application. The letter of support was for a future 43-unit, 100% affordable development project at that location. In signing that letter of support, they would, the project that was proposed would be exactly the project that goes to HCD and would have to be developed as that project. And the request came in very recently, and in our final analysis before coming to city council, there were items within their analysis that were not in alignment with our code. And so therefore, we pulled the item last week. On Tuesday of this week, we, and that was in agreement with the developer at the time, and then since then, they've requested that this be considered after we initially talked. And then on Tuesday of this week, we received a new pre-application for an SB 330 development, and that was for 88 units. And that's a pre-application in which we have to respond and provide comments to them, and then within 180 days, they have the ability to submit a complete application utilizing today's zoning code standards. So we're, it was really, unfortunately, you know, if we had received this months ago, we would have had time to analyze and go back and forth with the developer, but due to the timing and limited staff, we were unable to take all of those steps. So that's my update for you on this project and why it did not move forward, but the request is active from the applicant that this be considered. So, thank you. Is there any questions?
Thank you. I'll open it up for questions on this side.
Yeah, I think I'm just disappointed that this didn't get worked out, because we as a city, 100% of support affordable housing, especially if it's 100% affordable housing for our residents and the neighboring, in our neighbors in this region, that is really, really expensive. So, I mean, this back and forth just does not look great. As we know, CRP has done amazing projects all across the region, including the Bluffs. I would like for us to consider writing this letter of support for their deadline for the application, because it's either we have a good project or a worse project, and I care about a better project for our city, because is it true that this SB 330 pre-application is a ministerial approval, meaning we will have no say in terms of what this project will be?
So an SB 330 application would be a ministerial approval. I would need to analyze that project that came in on, or the pre-application to answer that in full.
Okay. So this letter of support would just help them be able to apply for CDBG grant funding, so that the project they have currently, which is the 43-unit project, will pencil out, which is a better project, obviously. Correct?
The letter of support is due next Friday, and it would be a letter of support for the grant. As I said prior, though, it does, that letter would be tied to the specific 43-unit development, because then their funding is tied to that proposal.
So what, what is the actual issue we had with the 43 units? I'm, I'm not understanding what the issue was. Why could we not support that project?
So we would, we need more time to go through the analysis, and this came in three weeks ago. And so the, the issue is there were a couple different factors with their, how they were quantifying and applying our code, and those were the issues. And I would like, you know, to have enough time to lay that out in a staff report for you, and that's why the item did not move forward on the agenda.
So those aren't like, not, they're reconcilable, like, differences or issues that we can work through?
So the fundamental, the fundamental problem came down to they initially submitted a base density calculation for the site, I think back in maybe two, two months ago, and then ultimately came in with a project about three weeks ago. And it wasn't until we had that actual project and then the base density calculations that we saw that there were some discrepancies between those two. And so in the conversation my staff had with them on Friday, we agreed that with the discrepancies between the base density calculations and the project and the limited amount of time that we would pull this off the agenda, we'd already noticed it, so we'd already told the community this was happening, so that's why it was placed on here for no action. So we were trying to make sure that everyone understood that this had been a discussion, we noticed it, but there's no recommended action because we didn't have the same understanding about the base density on the site.
Which could have been reconciled subsequently, after we have given the letter of support for them to apply for the grant.
I mean, so once, once the grant letter moves forward to the state, that 43 units is in stone. So there's no, we can't reconcile the number of units. And so where we were talking about base density, that's where we were having the trouble moving forward with this application, because those were off, so.
I have a few questions for clarifying. So back in sometime in October, CRP asked for a letter of support, correct?
Correct.
And then November 5th, the notices go out to the surrounding area, somewhere, somewhere in that time?
That's correct. That, it's not a requirement, but we did send letters of, we wanted to notify the surrounding properties.
And then on the 7th, the CRP and staff decide to take it off the agenda and have it only at consent for information only?
Last Friday.
And then yesterday, they come out with a project and have some plans, and then now they're asking us to put it back on and then in support with a letter.
So on Tuesday, they came out with an SB 330 application, a pre-application for 88 units on the site and six stories. And that was on Tuesday. And then yesterday, they emailed the city council, letting, you know, that they would prefer to move forward with the 43 units. However, on that site, they would pursue an SB 330 application of...
Thank you for the clarification, thanks. Before we go further, I have a question for our legal. Since this was on earlier, our consent item, and several people spoke, do we need to open it up for public comment again?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That is an open question. Government Code, Section 549, 54.3, Subdivision A, provides that the city must provide an opportunity for members of the public to address the council on certain matters, quote, "before or during the legislative body's consideration of the item." So you would have the discretion to rely on public comment that was provided previously while it was on consent, or pull it and allow further public comment.
I mean, before that, can we hear from CRP in terms of why there's this back and forth? Why did, why is there, why did you agree to not have this?
That's procedurally correct for us to...
Can we not do that?
I would leave that up to the staff if, if they wanted to.
Are we gonna open the public hearing?
Just a reminder to speak into your microphones, please.
Thank you.
And I have some additional questions to staff too before we...
Okay, we'll go, continue with council questions.
So just to, we haven't, the project has not been issued to council for any sort of review with any staff report, correct?
Correct.
And so yesterday, the email we got that had attached a project to it, is that the project? I don't, you know, I'm trying to understand, like, we're asked to put a letter of support, is, was the project that was attached to the email from the developer, was that the project that you have been working on, or is that a modified project, or what is it?
So the project that you, that, there were two projects attached to the email. So there was a request to consider, and they provided the details of both projects. The first project that was in, following the letter was the 43-unit project that we received approximately three weeks ago. The second project was the taller project with more units that we received as a pre-application on Tuesday. So the letter of support is for the, that they're requesting is for the first project with 43 units.
And thank you. And just so I can have you reflect back, and I appreciate the outreach that you do with your department, Katie, but going back to the issue in the Bulb Avenue, could you just step back a year and a half or something and talk about how we as a city have reached out to the community, even though some of the residents are in the county, but, you know, we look at them as our neighbors, so they're in Capitola kind of thing? Could you step back and talk about the process and how they've developed trust and how we got to here today?
Sure. So we've had two conceptual review applications on this project. One for a senior center, it was probably a year and a half ago, two years ago at this point. And the senior center application, we, I believe we went beyond the normal 300-feet notification and did the majority of the block of Bulb Avenue. And then we had a second application for an annexation request, in which we also went beyond the regular noticing. So when this came up, there is no noticing requirement for this request for grant, a letter of support, but due to the relationship, and knowing many of the people on the street and have participated in the city council meetings before, we didn't, we sent out notification to the residents. And Bulb Avenue, only the first property is in the city limits. All the other properties going beyond the first two properties on Capitola Road are all county resident properties, so, yeah, there, we have built up a relationship with them over the years.
Thank you for reviewing that. Thank you. At this time, I would like to ask Madam Clerk, if we can, if we do hold public comment, we can do it for 90 seconds. Okay? We'll open it up for a public comment for 90 seconds, but what I'd like to ask is that it's new or additional updated information, so it's not the same over and over again. Be appreciated. Welcome.
Thank you all. Where do I start? I'll start from the top. Why do we have a discrepancy, let's say? Time is of the essence. We also found out about CDBGDR application, and, you know, we considered the project, and we requested, you know, we submitted our initial base density and yield studies to the City Planning Commission, or I'm sorry, City Planning Department, I think about a month or two ago. We heard from the planning department on Friday at 3:00 PM that they disagreed with our studies that were provided. We were trying to avoid the, not conflict, but disagreement that we would both have about, you know, presenting up here. We wanted to, I wanted to present a united front, and it was suggested that maybe we pull it off the main agenda for discussion if we were going to do that, and we verbally consented to that. Following that initial conversation, we also reached back out to city planning, noting that we would still like to be on the agenda, because without a letter of support from the city to pursue funding, there is no chance for us to get any funding. It will not be considered by HCD. So we want to move forward with 43 units, you know, with support of the CDBGDR funding. So that's, I hope that answers your question.
Thank you. Welcome.
Hi, thank you, and thank you for giving us more public comment, because I feel like the information that was shared was very new, and I don't know exactly what base density means, but it sounds to me like they're not following the rules that are established by the city, or the, the city is noticing that there's a discrepancy. So for me, that means there's more need for transparency, because what I heard said was that if this letter goes forward, then the 43 units is set in stone, and I don't understand how you could set something in stone without full transparency and without, like, any research or, like, impact study. It just is unfathomable to me. And if it's an 88 unit, then fine, let them go forward with that, but they have to follow the rules. I live in the city, I live in the county, I have to follow the rules for building if I want to do an ADU, if I want to do this or that. I have to follow the rules, so I don't understand why they don't have to follow the rules. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Counsel, thank you, ma'am. In terms of following the rules, I think, and I hate to educate and try to be, explain it, but you have to look at a development for affordable housing in two different ways, the funding source and the entitlement process. We will follow the rules, we have to do traffic studies. The state of California, all the funding sources scrutinize every little thing that we do. So we are just here for a letter of support, not our entitlement package. We will do every study that is required of us and beyond what a normal market rate developer has to do. So I think that's just the misconception that we just get to jump over everything from the code wise, we're just trying to come to an agreement, that's what that code says, to get this letter out in time. Look, I lead the acquisitions team, and, you know, we love to work with the city. The Bluffs is supposed to be 50 units, five stories. Turned out to be 36. So there's ways around what we do to make things more appealing or at least help out with the city. I get it. Everybody here is doing what they, you know, need to do for their families and their community. I get that. I live next to an affordable housing developer myself, I get it. But to work together is basically the question that we're, we're asking, please, you know, that's it. We're not trying to, you know, jump ahead, break any rules, but our mission statement is to build affordable housing, so we have to do in the best interests of our company as they do for their community. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Hi, counsel. My name is Marcus. I'm on the acquisitions team with CRP as well. I just wanted to bring up some information that people may not be privy to. You know, back in, I think it was May or even sooner this year, there was another project proposed, the senior housing development that Katie brought up, that was ultimately denied, and the owner, we approached and we decided to move forward with purchasing their property, as well as 1610 Bulb Avenue that they also own, and they were in the process of annexing that through, from the county into the city, which we met privately and consulted with every council member, we reached out to all of you, even the ex-mayor we met with in person, or the ex-vice mayor. And they were all, I mean, he was in support of it, everybody else was, you know, if we had the annex, and this was back in May, you know, this wasn't just something we just threw up last minute. So for us, you know, we, having 1610 Bulb Avenue annexed into this project would have provided more parking, so to speak. So, you know, in collaboration and cooperation with you guys, seeing the Bluffs being one of the only affordable housing projects in the last decade, you know, we're providing you guys ample opportunity to provide housing to your city, to work with us, and these are people that live and work in Capitola. These are working citizens, these are people like Kathleen that came up and spoke earlier, so I just wanted to provide some clarification as to our continued discussions with the city. Thanks.
Thank you. Welcome.
Hi, Caroline, again, Bulb Avenue. I guess this might be a silly question, but I just, I don't know if I understand, like, the timeline and why this is so, like, rushed, like, we need it, like, why was the study not able to happen before? I know that, like, there's more studies that would happen, but it seems like it's kind of like cart before horse, so I'm just kind of wondering, why is the timeline so crunched? And like, why can't we stretch it out and just do the studies first?
Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you. So I'd like some clarity of the location of cross streets and state some general observations. It does seem like there's a rush to do this and why. Seems like there have been so many developments, very, very tall buildings all over, and of course, the developer, instead of one level building, they're collecting rent on all these levels. they're collecting rent on all these levels. And I often find when I hear affordable, it really isn't affordable. And I remember in the old days, there used to be public housing, which was really affordable. So I'd like a definition of that. And it sounds like, are there two projects? Could you clarify, please, the, the locations? And in general, I am dismayed at all these so-called developments happening. It's huge. A friend of mine used to say, it's not developments. It's desecration and dispoilment of the natural environment. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Good evening, everybody. I agree with this woman. What is affordability? How long does it last? You buy the house, three years later, you sell the house for market value. When's that, you know, it's no longer affordable. I think that's wrong. Secondly, we're in a small, tight-knit community, a little neighborhood. We own a single family, you know, two-story, one-story houses. It just, it just doesn't, it just doesn't fit into the aesthetic of the neighborhood. There are other places in Capitola that are far better for a project like this that can handle a four-story, a five-story, six-story, eight-story, however hell big you want to make it. But I just think it's ridiculous to put a four-story building on the corner of a residential neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
I just want to say for the record, these guys are being really sneaky. It's kind of like that. And they, they posted a little nine-by-eleven sign, which I think was sneaky. And they're also doing a wheelchair thing too. I don't know if the wheelchair lady was here. They're going to try and play the handicap card. And there's not even any sidewalks on our street, so. Thanks.
Thank you. Welcome.
I also live on Bulb. And I would like to also have a clarification and find out about the study. Why is this all being so rushed? And if also the Capitola Mall is going to be building, our little street will not be able, it's going to be completely impacted by all that traffic. And building a 43 unit or 80 units, whatever they're thinking, they're not talking about parking. That there is no parking. So where are people supposed to park? And they're saying, you know, a car per unit. I mean, we all know that's not going to happen. But it's going to impact so many of us. And that street is a very small street. And, you know, there's just a lot of people walking their dogs and, you know, the traffic is just going to be completely impacting our street. And I really would love to see the study on the traffic alone. And we, you know, accidents, bicyclists, and, yeah. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Hi. All right. Much of what I'm going to say has been covered, but we met as a community and the two biggest concerns that we came up for our neighborhood was traffic and parking. And it concerns me greatly that what they're asking for is a letter of approval of the 43 unit. Yet it's not set in stone, but it would go forward as the plans. And my concern is, as when you stand on Bulb Avenue, you look to the traffic as people are exiting into Capitola Road. People don't go that way anymore. What they do is they cut down our street. So if you're going to put a 43 unit with 43, I think it's maybe 41 parking spots, where are the other people going to park? They can't park on 38th Avenue. They can't park on Capitola Road. They can't park on Heritage Lane, Thompson Avenue. The Bulb Avenue is going to be the place that they park. We can all say, they get one parking spot and not all those people have cars. But the reality is, people have cars and they're going to park. So when we're looking at the development at Capitola Mall that's happening and this one, there's one that's going down further on Capitola Road, where's the traffic going to go? And it's going to significantly impact us. So I appreciate you guys taking us into consideration and considering the value of our neighborhood because right now it's going to become a fair way of traffic and put peoples at risk. So thank you very much for your consideration.
Thank you. Welcome.
I'm Garrett Bascom. I'm also with CRP. We're in a housing supply crisis. No project is perfect. We all have issues, but we're in a housing supply crisis. I've been in the back looking on rent.com. Twos and three bedrooms in this town are very few and far between. There's a couple that stood out to me, 1765 46th Avenue, three-bedroom apartment going for $5,299 a month. 1485 47th Avenue, Unit F, three-bedroom apartment listed at $6,500 a month. Currently, the Bluffs has 25 two- and three-bedroom units. Two-bedroom units are going to be offered at $1,144 a month. Three-bedroom units are going to be offered at $1,294 a month. These are deed restricted for 55 years. I, I, I understand all the concerns here. We really do. But whether we like it or not, we don't, we, we're here for a long, long time. We're done with the Bluffs and we're standing here today. We didn't turn and run. And we're going to be here for a long, long time. We really do want to be a good project. We really do want to be partners with the city. Thank you.
Thank you. So you know further public comment? We'll bring it back for deliberation. I, I was wondering if, if our planning director could come up and maybe just while the community's here and also just refresh us. On, let's say, the Bluff project, what was the process of a project like that that comes in? Just briefly, could you, like the steps that usually those are followed?
Sure. The Bluff project was a density bonus application. So that's under state law. It's a type of application you can apply for. We've adopted a local ordinance for density bonus as well. And when you apply for a density bonus, you establish a base density. And then the applicant can ask for concessions and waivers to get additional height, to reduce their parking, to have reduced setbacks. There's a, they do not have to follow the standards of the code. So there's a lot more flexibility. And the purpose of that is really to make it feasible for a developer to produce housing on a site. So, and the process for that is that the planning, it goes before Planning Commission for review of objective standards. So we have standards in our code that are objective standards that can be measured. And anyone that reads the code can understand exactly what the city is asking for, if it's material types or asking for some administration in the building. It's very, it's, it's measurable. The old code standard is talking about compatibility and fitting within the beach community. That was yesterday's code. Today, it's all about objective standards. So when a developer comes in. And so in the Planning Commission's review of that project, the review is strictly for the objective standards that we have in our code.
And could you, I'm sorry, go backwards. The process of how an application just comes in, can you just talk about that before it gets to planning? And then after planning, it gets, then it comes to council, is that correct?
Yes. So it comes into Planning Commission with a recommendation to City Council.
And then the process, how's the application just come in on a project like this? Like, what's the protocol that you guys go through in the planning department?
Yeah, we have a checklist that we go through and the density bonus application checklist to make sure that the developers provided all the information for a density bonus application. We review everything that they've submitted and provide comments. If it's an incomplete application, we give them an incomplete notice. And after that, we, once they do have a complete application, we draft up the staff report for Planning Commission review. We send out public notice. We put notice in the newspaper. So it's quite thorough and it, there was definitely with the Bluffs at least one round, but probably two rounds of incomplete letters before they went to Planning Commission. And then once they did go to Planning Commission, because it's objective standards, I think it was two hearings in front of the Planning Commission. There were a few items that came up around parking that were addressed. And then we came back. It was more about like the site layout and parking at the time of Planning Commission. But that is the process, so.
Thank you. I just have one, one last question. Is there, like, I know state law with the ADU, any of you, you have certain timeframe to respond back to a project. So like, on projects like this, is there a certain time once they turn an application to the planning department that you have to get it to the next stage of like Planning Commission?
You know, I wish I had the code right in front of me. Typically, once we have an application, we move forward with it. But I don't think it's tied to a time clock for the density bonus application. I would need to look that up.
All right, I just didn't know, like, was the, like the Bluffs, what was the timeframe that project took? As, if we use that for an example. You know Ballpark? I'm just trying to understand. I'm hearing some of the questions coming back from the community, like rush on timeframe. So I was wondering, was this a timeframe? I think you said you had it for three weeks. Is that what the Bluffs was? Or was the Bluffs a lot longer before everyone's planning?
Yeah, the Bluffs went through two rounds of incomplete letters, I believe, before it went to Planning Commission.
Thank you. Sorry about the loaded question.
How was your experience working with CRP with the Bluff project?
They're very professional and it was, they're very responsive to the incomplete letters. And, you know, it's a respectful process and.
Great. And did we provide a letter of support for the Bluff project for the CDBG grant?
No. So this, this is unique. The difference here is, under the density, they're, they're going after specific funding in which part of the application is a letter of support from the city. So that was not part of the Bluff application. It, it wasn't, that funding wasn't not around. And this, this funding source is tied to the storms that occurred in our area. So it's a regional grant opportunity tied to CDBG, but for just all the damage during the storms to housing, so.
And as we know, grants are very fickle. We, we have them now, we may not have them tomorrow. And this administration is, is, yeah, not supportive for a lot of the things we're trying to do. So it sounds like we have a unique situation where there is a deadline by next Friday. And really, the question here is, do we want a 43-unit project? Or do we want an 88-unit project? Because we can't support them in getting grant funding for a better project. And I pose this question to my fellow council members, like, what would you prefer?
Okay, so we're doing discussion now.
We're discussing, correct.
I, you know, I think for myself that I have pretty good credentials when it comes to supporting affordable housing projects. And I was on the Planning Commission when the Bluffs came in. And I thought that we did a great job working with the developer and staff working with them. But it did take some time to have that happen and have a, a good project come forward. For me, you know, I'm understanding all of the new state housing laws and the demands that are being put on cities. But I do think we have to have some sort of process in our community that does have some transparency and some opportunity for them to at least know what's going to happen, know some of the facts about a project and how it's going to work. And this particular process, the way it's unfolded, has been very uncomfortable for me. I don't think that someone coming in and saying, if you don't do what we want, then we're going to do something worse to you. I find that to be a very uncomfortable sort of bullying kind of technique. And to be honest, it really shocked me that this was the place that we ended up with because I thought we had left the Bluff project having pretty good relationships with the developer and, you know, indicating that we were willing to work with them. And this process, in all honesty, doesn't work for me. I don't think that I would be in favor of writing a letter of support right now and committing to a 43-unit project that we really know nothing about. And I'm, I'm certain the developer says they own the property. There's going to be a project. There's going to be affordable housing. Is it going to be 30 units, 40 units, 50 units, 60 units, even 80 units? We don't know right now. But I, I don't find myself in a place, I actually even talked to, had a resident from Bulb call me and ask me earlier in the week if this item was going to be on the agenda, were we going to make this decision? And I said, no, we're not because we don't have a project before us. And, you know, I, I can't go back and now say, well, I'm going to, you know, I told someone not to come to the meeting. Now I'm going to, you know, do what I told you we were not going to do. So for me, I, I can't support giving them a letter right now. I understand that funding is difficult, but there are various ways to do it. They've shown you can do it and have done it on other projects. So those are my comments from now and I look forward to hearing what my other council members have to say.
Thank you. Yeah, I, I, I do feel like we are being pigeonholed into, like what Ms. Westman said, a kind of uncomfortable situation. As referring to the Bluffs, the applications came back twice. Now, we received what their idea was for the 43 units. We couldn't confirm or agree on calculations. Why didn't it come back with the proper calculations to match what we are asking for in order for us to be supportive of the, the big ask? And yes, I understand that funding is, is scary right now. I just don't know that I would be comfortable just blindly signing something that is putting us in a position for what we don't know to come. Either way, there's gray area. I'm not saying that this road is easy. I, I'm in 100% support of affordable housing. We did approve the Bluffs my last term. And I just think that somehow the due process has been removed from this situation. And, you know, we've talked a lot on this dais about transparency, about process, about, you know, community involvement. And just, I mean, I'm glad you said that about having spoken to a community member. And, yeah, I mean, I sat here looking at the, at the consent items thinking, okay, we're, you know, that's on consent. We're really, we're not going to hear this tonight. So I don't, I don't feel educated and I don't make decisions based on hearsay.
Thank you for the comments. I would, I would agree with the last two council members. I hope this is more of a misunderstanding, but, but the threat that has been given doesn't sit well with me. But what I think we have to realize, you know, California is going through some times that we have to pay attention. And they've changed the laws and they're trying to make sure that the cities and the counties don't have the powers to do anything. And, and they're going to let builders come in and do whatever they want. With that being said, it's unfortunate that we're on a time crunch, but I, I cannot see us giving them a letter of support at this time.
Ms. Rea, I'd like to just respond to a question that a council member, Rick, had regarding, do we want a 43 unit or an 80 unit? What I think I want was clear transparency in our process. And I'm proud of the steps that our Planning Commission has taken today or our City Council has taken today with our housing element. I'm proud of the process that we're going through with the mall. We stepped back and looked at the mall and had a community outreach meeting. And, you know, it's something that I think we shall reflect back onto. This process is just as important as we get there. And I'm proud when I look at the numbers of our, out of our housing element that we have all bought into, that we are supportive of affordable housing. have all bought into, that we are supportive of affordable housing. But there's a process in getting there as a community, which is very important to me. Thank you.
I just wanna make a comment that, I just wanna have a little reality check here. Like, we're, every year, State of California is coming down with more and more housing laws because cities are not allowing developers, good, mission-driven nonprofit developers to build affordable housing. And this is the predicament we're in. There are gonna, there will be more and more laws so that developers don't have to go through these processes. And we have an option to choose whether we want less or more, have some control or no control. I mean, it is what it is, doesn't sound like you'll have the letters of support, so we may be seeing an 88-unit project. Thanks.
I'll bring it back for, someone would like to make a motion.
I'll make a motion at this time that we deny the applicant's request for a letter of support and indicate that it doesn't mean we're supportive of them building an affordable project here, but at this point in time, we don't have enough information or we haven't worked with our community to be supportive.
Second. I have a first and a second. Can I get a roll call, please?
Councilor Johnson?
Aye.
Councilor Orbach? Councilor Westman?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Morgan?
Aye.
And Mayor Clark?
Aye. The motion passes.
Thank you. At this time, we're gonna take a five-minute break. ECD, let's get them now. Four more things. If you can find your seats, we will get back to business. We have B, C, D, and E left. So, B, 44th Avenue Corridor Plan.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Tonight, I'm excited to introduce you to Daniel Cunningham with SWA, our consultant team that has been working on the 41st Avenue Corridor Plan. Just to step back, you approved the 41st Avenue Corridor Plan as, and as an implementation measure for really planning for the future housing on the mall site and really looking at economic development and placemaking and attracting people to the 41st Avenue corridor in our commercial district. So with that, it's exciting, we've done some public outreach, we're gonna share that with you tonight, where we are in the process. And the last slide tonight will be on the goals that we've found through the public outreach process. And so we're looking for any edits you would like to those goals or any ideas you have on that before moving forward and drafting the final plan. So with that, Daniel.
Yes, thank you, Katie. And good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and council members. As Katie has mentioned, we've been working on this project for the past several months, both with the city staff as well as an extensive community outreach. So happy to be here tonight to share an update. Just a refresh of the scope of this study. So the area that is shown in blue is what's currently in the 41st Avenue corridor study. So the scope of work begins at the Caltrans right-of-way near Highway One and extends all the way to the city limits on 41st Avenue. There is a separate but related study that Katie is working on for the mall site itself that we are kind of aligning, but the scope of our work is really limited to 41st Avenue within the public right-of-way. As we are looking at the future of 41st Avenue, 41st Avenue has transitioned quite a bit over the years and we think it's important to look back at how this has evolved as a corridor in Capitola. In the 1950s, saw the first transformation from an agricultural road to a street that moves many more cars into the city. And then, of course, in the 1960s and 70s, there was a significant auto boom and we saw the land use change on 41st Avenue and the development pattern of this corridor changed to focus on moving more cars in, into 41st Avenue. And as we start to look at some of these land use and patterns changing, it's important to think, to stop and do this exercise to really understand what is the future of 41st Avenue and what is the best for Capitola. Just stepping back and looking at why 41st is important, 41st Avenue is one of the gateways to Capitola. So this is the first and last thing that visitors and residents see as we enter the city. Also recognizing that this is one of the most high-traffic corridors in the county with about 40,000 vehicular traffic counted on this stretch of 41st Avenue. So very important in terms of vehicular traffic. This is also the economic engine of Capitola. This was, you know, the primary retail district, both in the city and the county. And so recognizing that, ensuring that retail and economic viability for this street is an important asset moving into the future. So first, we wanted to start with the question of what does make a great street? And the following slides are some, streets are our opportunity to really create a sense of place. Streets kind of communicate the values of a city in creating livable, walkable communities. And streets are the kind of first and last thing you see, as we mentioned. Additionally, streets offer the opportunity as a place to gather. You know, this may not be appropriate for every spot on 41st Avenue, but as we start to think about these land use patterns changing, what are the opportunities for the streets to give back to additional types of uses that will be occurring along 41st Avenue? Safety, of course, is first and foremost. Multimodal streets and types of transportation have evolved since this street was designed. So thinking about the additional types of users that are using 41st Avenue other than the car and how can all of these things come together in harmony is something that we want to consider as we move forward with this vision. And also, streets are an opportunity to communicate the values of a city. So what are the opportunities to integrate, you know, a sense of place through art and through color and through signage to communicate that this isn't just a street in any city of America, but this is ultimately uniquely Capitola? And again, we wanna ensure that what we're doing here is right for your community and your city. And so that's what we've been participating in these community meetings over the past few months to understand what is important to the community of Capitola and how can we ensure that the goals of this project are right for the future of 41st Avenue? Just, it's important to also recognize safety, of course, first and foremost for 41st Avenue. So just some data on incidents that have been recorded on 41st Avenue. So this, the study area is shown in red and we can see there are a concentration of pedestrian and bicycle conflicts that occur near Highway One as well as around Capitola Road. So there are areas for improvement in terms of safety within this corridor when it comes to bicycle and pedestrian. If we look at car and car incidents, again, there's kind of a pattern where the first block between Highway One and Claire Street is kind of a hotspot as well as around Capitola Road heading toward the ocean. So one of the types of outreach that we've completed is an online survey. And as part of that online survey, we received close to 197 responses. 60% of those were Capitola residents. The others are likely neighbors living nearby. And of those respondents, 86% were drivers, unsurprisingly. We also received feedback at three community stakeholder meetings. The one image here is an open house that took place at the local middle school in which we had about 50 participants ranging from car users to bicycle users to pedestrians who all provided feedback to help us refine the goals that we're here to present to you Just a quick summary on some of the feedback that we received. When we asked what improvements would like to be seen on 41st Avenue, traffic and efficiency was by far and foremost the most important thing we heard, both in the survey as well as those that participated in online meetings and in the workshop. We also heard a lot of feedback on improvements to bicycle infrastructure as well as pedestrian safety and some feed, some feedback on better access and visibility to transit on this When we asked the community whether or not they felt safe using 41st Avenue, about one third of the respondents said that they felt somewhat or very safe, which means there is room for improvement in terms of the perception of safety on 41st Avenue. When we asked the, the community whether they felt that 41st Avenue felt memorable as a commercial district or uniquely Capitola, the rating was pretty poor. And we, we see this as a great opportunity as this street is changing to change the identity of 41st and better reflect the, the unique values and images of Capitola. And then when we asked, you know, what type of public amenities would the community like to see, it's pretty, there's a pretty broad range of amenities that the community would like to see. Some of those that stand out are landscape improvements and street trees, improved medians as well as widened sidewalks, as well as additional amenities such as benches and bus So I'm gonna go through this one a little bit more slowly. These are the draft vision goals that were created and have been refined based on the feedback that we've received thus far. The first is multimodal streets. So this goal is to develop a versatile street that encourages all modes of travel, including walking, biking, public transit, and driving. The second goal, the draft goal, is safe, a safe and healthy street. So to ensure that safe travel for all members of the community, residents, visitors, and people of all ages and abilities. The third goal is to improve the corridor efficiency. And this is based on a lot of feedback that we had received through the process. And then this goal is to improve the corridor's traffic efficiency to make daily travel more comfortable and reliable on 41st Avenue. The fourth goal is to activate business through quality public realm. And this goal is to stimulate local economy by providing public spaces that support existing and encourage new economic opportunity. And then finally, the goal of placemaking for future residential, recognizing that some of these zoning is changing and these land use patterns are changing, how can we provide a community-centered amenities to foster interaction and enhance livability and support neighborhood vitality? And with that, we would welcome any feedback or comments on these draft vision goals as we continue to move through the vision process for this study. So thank you very much.
Thank you. That's a lot of good information. Katie, do you have anything further before we go to council questions?
No, just, these are the goals that were up there. We can bring those back up after public comment or questions, but that's what we're hoping to get feedback on before we start looking at that street and proposing ideas.
All right. Question starting on this side.
I was wondering what the overlay is, like, I know the mall is still brewing out there, what the mall is going to be and everything. And then we hear one of the things from the presenter was about retail. And then we hear that might be a lack of retail at the mall. So how are you managing trying to design or look at 41st as a vision and not knowing what the mall is going to be and how you're gonna try to accommodate that? And are you going to try to accommodate that?
So I have to give kudos to SWA. They've been willing to meet with our planning group with the mall, with Ben Noble Planning. And we've had multiple meetings where we all meet as a team. So Daniel's team is really up to date on the efforts we're taking at the mall. And we're planning on meeting with, as a team, with both consultants next week as well. So he's up to date on the seventy-five feet height, the additional floor area, what we're expecting in terms of more residential, probably less commercial, a hotel on the site. So they, they are up to date on that. And these two documents, at the end of the day, will hopefully be working together once we have an adopted Forty First Avenue corridor study, as well as our new objective standards. We're going to make sure that they weave together, so.
Thank you for that.
I know we're looking at Forty First Avenue. But to me, I think we really need to take a bigger, more regional approach, because it's hard to have it all. I'd love to have it all, too, but we only have so much space, and we're only talking about Forty First. Decreasing the lanes will, people will go bonkers over that. But I do believe in complete streets, right? We do need a better way to move our bicyclists and our people to have them feel safe. Have you thought of incorporating Claire's as well? Because Claire's right now is also very unsafe. I'd love to see it to be a complete street. If there is an alternate way where people can move with their bicycle and by walking, can we incorporate that into our, our kind of vision? I think it's important to have this bigger. Yes, so this is something that we actually have been talking about since we've started this process. The, the, the scope is Forty First Avenue from the, from the city limits. So getting off the highway and then down just beyond the railroad crossing. But if you, so, and I agree, like with everything that's, that we're planning for right now, it seems like we're leaving out a critical path of going around Claire Street and then tying it back from Capitola Road to Forty First Avenue. Because to your point, bicycles coming down Forty First Avenue, Claire Street could be a great way to keep them off such a busy street and bring them around and down other roads. So those, we have had conversations on that. To bring that in, we, I have asked the consultant about, for a ballpark figure on that. And it would also include Kim Lee Horn working on this to make sure, like, this isn't just a beautification project. We want to make sure that it works at the end of the day and that the road functions at a high level in placemaking. So with that, to add Claire Street and Capitola Road, and then extend it another block on Capitola Road, because you always want to look at your inputs, would be somewhere between fifty-five and sixty-five thousand. The original contract was for a hundred thousand, maybe slightly over.
So we'd have to look at a budget amendment?
We would have to look at a budget amendment.
The scope of the project.
And there is, I, I did before the meeting, check on our general plan budget, because this is implementation. And there, there is funding there for that if the council wanted to pursue that. I just think it's important that we take a bigger look at the whole region, right? And I've made this comment before about how there were two previous, kind of Forty First visioning plans that really didn't go anywhere. So I don't want this to be a third visioning plan that goes nowhere. I think we really need to have a strategic way to design, especially synergistically with what we're doing at the mall. So thinking about it as a wraparound region would make sense to me. Thanks.
I don't have any questions at this time. I'll sort of wait till we do our discussion after we hear from the public.
Yes, the same for me. I will wait until we get to the discussion portion of it. So at this point, we will take it to public comment. Welcome.
Thank you.
I try to stay off of Forty First Avenue because it's kind of scary. But I was thinking, watching the historical presentation here, it just makes me so sad how it was a beautiful landscape, agricultural area. I think there were chicken farmers, and now we're in this situation. There's a documentary I've referred to before called Taken for a Ride. Have we ever been taken for a ride? And it documents how General Motors, Goodyear Tire bought up good public transportation, the, like, the red car in LA that my mother used to ride on. Because people, and the documentary shows how people could take this transportation system, the streetcar, very inexpensively, ran every few minutes. And so people could get where they wanted to go. My mother used to ride it to work when she was, I think, about nineteen. And the automobile industry said, you know, if people can take this transportation system, they're not going to buy our automobiles. Let's rip it up. And they destroyed it. And the documentary shows them burning these red cars. And also, there were discussions of what would happen if we went for the automobile. And they predicted just what we're seeing. Pollution, crashes, deaths on the road, roadkill, people spending hours working on this, the destruction of communities. So, and the landscape. It shows in large part how the challenge is the corporate, the domination of the corporate state, including these automobile industries. To this day, what's happening on the freeway is congesting Capitola. And it's, it's a difficult situation with the interest there of what to do with what we have been left for because we've been taken for a ride.
Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you. Becky Steinbrenner. I'm remembering forty years ago, when I was much younger, and I rode my bicycle everywhere in this county. And I went to a public meeting where they were discussing the proposed Capitola Mall. And at the time, I made the plea to incorporate bike lanes in places because it wasn't safe then, and with the Capitola Mall, it would be worse. Well, here we are, forty years later. I don't ride my bike anymore, but I also try to avoid Forty First Avenue, just because it's unpleasant. It's noisy and just a lot of traffic. I tend to use the Claire Street Avenue area much more. Forty First Avenue is not a street. It's a boulevard. And there's a big difference in the perception of what that means to people. So some of these images are very beautiful for a street, but Forty First Avenue is not that and cannot be that. I'm really happy to not hear anybody mention road diet, which is a term that they're using in Watsonville, where they're eliminating lanes of traffic to try to slow people down. And it is, it is abysmal. So please don't do that here. What I think is a good solution for you to, to think about and consider is what Scott Valley did with Scott Valley Drive. It's much the same as Forty First Avenue for you. And what Scott Valley did was they made a center berm, much like what already exists along Forty First Avenue. But they, they put raised beds in it, a berm, and beautiful, beautiful landscaping using recycled water. So it is a much more pleasant view as you travel that. It seems to slow people down, just because it's not such a wide-open boulevard space. So I urge you to consult with Scott Valley about how that went. I know it went well. I know that the contractor came in under budget and much quicker than was anticipated. So I would urge you to consider landscaping. It would help buffer the noise and certainly improve the visual as you go down either way. Thank you very much.
Thank you. See no further comment. We'll take it to council deliberation. I believe we're taking up on this side.
Well, there's certainly a lot to think about here. At this point in time, I think Forty First Avenue is the most, has the most traffic on it of any street in Santa Cruz County. And I think it's, it's, you know, I think Councilmember Orbach is right. We would like to have everything, but we have a limited amount of space. And for me, I think it's important that, you know, while no one likes cars, no one likes traffic these days, the traffic does need to move through there easily and effectively, so it doesn't become a bottleneck. So we, we have to recognize that this isn't going to be a quiet, meandering kind of street. It's, it's going to be a major thoroughfare, and how can we best deal with that? But I also think that, you know, having a place for pedestrians to walk and having bike lanes in there so people can use them are, are important assets. And I think we're going to have to get creative if we're going to try and provide some of those amenities. One example I can remember is actually walking that area, I think, with Councilmember Jensen, our community development director, in front of the mall and realizing that you're down on a sidewalk next to this concrete sort of berm that goes up. It's a very unpleasant place to be. So, you know, I'm hoping we can come up with some plans to maybe even encourage the mall to, you know, allow the sidewalk to be on top and their property where it could meander a bit, and we could provide some of the amenities like benches and, you know, small places for people to sit down. Because I think, you know, pedestrian travel, we, we do a lot for bike lanes lately. But, you know, pedestrians are equally as important, particularly in an area like that where we're talking about having more residential. And I don't object to sort of expanding the area because it might be appropriate just to avoid trying to put bike lanes on Forty First Avenue through that area at all. You know, maybe Claire Street is the place where we could have a little more room and have something like that happen. And while we want to have everything on a street, maybe some streets, we don't have bike lanes, but we have better pedestrian. And on other streets, we have better bike lanes and, and less pedestrians. I just think we're going to have to get creative. And I don't think we can use sort of a, you know, well, here is the model for, you know, multimodal streets, and this is how it's supposed to be. I think we're going to have to be much more creative than that if we want to make this work and want to make some changes in the area. One thing that does bother me tremendously is that we're, we're trying to design something right now when we don't know what is going to happen on the biggest piece of property up there. And, you know, that, that, that worries me. So I don't know what the timing is for trying to come up with a final design plan or final program to try and work with. But in some ways, I would be a little more comfortable if some of it slowed down a bit, since we have some expectations that maybe something in the spring is going to happen, you know, with the bigger piece of property. But I appreciate the work that's been done. You know, a lot of the, the pictures that we saw of streets and things, I, I don't think really apply to Forty First Avenue. But I look forward to seeing the final results. So keeping the traffic going smoothly, trying to figure out a way to do better pedestrian bikeways and are my main priorities.
Thank you. Yes, I, I agree. I, I definitely would like to see if we can incorporate Claire's at some level, especially because it does seem like we're trying to coincide with the mall project. I'm glad to know that they're talking to one another, so that's, that's great. Yeah, I agree. I think some of the, the imaging was really nice. However, I, I don't know how much of that we could really have on Forty First. But I think, you know, some, some public art opportunities comes to mind, maybe working with the arts and cultural. I think vegetation is a great idea. Anything to sort of bring life instead of just concrete there, I think, would be great. Definitely, any type of pedestrian bike safety, always going to be for that. I don't know what the feasibility of doing that, this type of project in, like, phases or certain parts of what. But yeah, I think, I think this is a good start. I think, I thank you for the outreach and the community feedback. It has been really good. So I'm excited to move forward with a big, big part of Capitola, so thanks.
Yeah, I can, two questions, I guess. One thing, we're starting to talk about budget. You said if there's additional cost of fifty thousand dollars sum, and you talked about funding, where would that come from? And what would that look like? And what would the balance be in that account after the fact and stuff?
It would come out of our general plan fund. And I looked at it earlier with our finance director. And I think there's a healthy balance of somewhere between two fifty and three hundred thousand. So this would still have a good balance of over two hundred thousand. But I could put the exact numbers in a future staff report if you want this direction.
Okay. Yeah, and like Councilmember Orbach said, I think picking up Claire's is, is a great idea. But again, to pause a little bit, because I've heard even talk that Metro station might move to the backside, and it could be back in the Claire's area or something like that. And so before we get too far along, looking at how path the travel could work if there is Metro accessing the backside or a different section of the mall, there could be some duplication at work. So I support the idea of including that. But even like Councilwoman Weston said, to pause, if we can get a commitment from Marlon Guyer, you made conceptual one step further along to understand that we are, that we're not wasting money and having some duplication.
That was the previous plan, right, to move the, the bus over to the backside?
Correct.
Yeah. Have we, have we had a meeting with Metro yet?
Meeting with them tomorrow.
Okay, good. I'm glad, I'm encouraged to hear that Marlon Guyer Partners is a part of these meetings because I feel like that stretch of Forty First, where the mall is, could substantially change. Like currently, it's like parking lot, parking lot.
But I should clarify, Ben Noble Planning has been involved.
Oh, not Marlon.
He's not Marlon Guyer Partners.
Oh, I see Ben Noble. Okay. Still encouraging, so thank you. You know, again, like I said, I would love to see us increase the scope of this corridor plan to include Claire's and Capitola Road, to figure out a way to better divert and have a safer place for our pedestrians and our bikers to use our streets. Road diets will not work on Forty First because it's so congested already. It's just not going to happen. I don't think it's going to happen. And it'll be delusional, delusional of us to think that it will. So, I mean, I, at this point, it sounds like So, I mean, at this point, it sounds like a lot of people are in agreement with that. So I'd like to move to increase the scope of the corridor plan to include Claire's and Capitola Road.
Sounds like you're getting good direction. We don't need to vote on anything. I'm encouraged by the corridor plan so far, but we definitely need to incorporate Claire's and wait for the project of the mall to come down so we can put it all together. So hopefully that gives you a good idea of where we're going.
So we're going to ask the staff to come back at a future council meeting because we'd have to do a budget amendment and look at those kinds of things to expand this study to include Claire's and maybe the first blocks off of Capitola Road.
Absolutely.
Yeah. Or maybe on Capitola Road, go down to Claire Street since we're sort of doing that loop.
Yeah, we'll bring back a full scope and a budget amendment.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for all your input.
Good information.
Thank you very much.
All right, this next one is item C, Rispin Reflection Pool Public Art Project. Welcome Nikki.
Good evening. Good evening, Mayor, council members. All right, so the item before you this evening is the Rispin Reflecting Pool is a public art project. Next slide please. And so the recommendation is ultimately to increase the funding by $25,000 from the Public Art Fund for a total project budget of $50,000. So the Art and Cultural Commission has the responsibility to administer the Public Art Fund for the management of public art in the city. And the Rispin Mansion Park Project, which we will hopefully soon all get to walk around. When it was originally, the original concept was refined in order to fit within the available budget. One of the items that was not able to fit in the budget was the Mosaic Reflecting Pool that would be in the historic site's former fountain. In order to fund that aspect of it, the Public Works Director in February submitted a grant, an NEA grant, and council approved an additional $25,000 from the Public Art Fund to support as a matching for that grant. Staff anticipates getting notification of that award in December of 2025. However, since that time, the community has shown very strong interest in making sure that the reflecting pool is an aspect of this park. And so in response to that, the Art and Cultural Commission has decided that it would like to have a call to artists released for the project. So to progress this project, the Art and Cultural Commission recommends the city council allocate an additional $25,000 from the Public Art Fund and that staff develop a call to artists. Attached in the packet was a draft call to artists. And so with this additional allocation, it would establish two levels of budget for this reflecting pool. The first would be $50,000 that would be from the Public Art Fund. And then the second level would be is if the city has awarded the NEA grant, and that budget would be $125,000. The call to artists focuses specifically on the reflecting pool, but in the original design in 2014 for Rispin, that there was a suggestion that it could have a statue in the center, a raised element. And so the call to artists, the draft suggests that if the city were awarded the larger amount, that that could be considered and would be part of the proposals. The Art and Cultural Commission has a meeting on the 18th. It was rescheduled. It would have been on the 11th, which was a holiday. And so they will be reviewing this draft call to artists. And so for council action tonight, depending on that, if you have any feedback on that draft, that would be welcome as well. All right, so the current project budget, as previously established, is $25,000. So this proposal would increase the budget to $50,000 of the Public Art Fund, which is a restricted fund. It currently holds a balance of $125,200 with approximately $60,000 committed to current projects. And so if this allocation and resolution goes forward tonight, there would be approximately $40,000 that would be available for future projects. Just to remind everybody that the reflect, where the reflecting pool is located, so this is an overhead view of the Rispin Park under the trees there and the reflecting pool is right near the crosswalks. And so the recommended action tonight, adopt a resolution amending the budget to add an additional $25,000 from the Public Art Fund for a total project budget of $50,000. And with that, I'm available for questions.
Thank you. Start on this side.
So $50,000 will do the mosaic project, but it won't do a statue in the center? Is that what you're saying?
That, that is what we are guessing at the moment. The call to artists put out a budget and we are asking an artist to propose what they think works within that budget. And so we will hopefully get concepts on the proposal for the reflecting pool, just the fountain piece as it is. And then if we get the higher level, that it would hopefully include a statue. Nothing, if there's an artist out there that thinks that they can do both for $50,000, then they could include that in their proposal as well.
So I do have to ask the question, you indicated earlier that we're going to find out about whether or not we get the grant in like December 15th of this year. I mean, today's the 13th, I think the 13th. You know, I'm wondering why we sort of jumped ahead when in four weeks, we're sort of going to know exactly how much money we're going to have to do for the project.
So I do think that it has a lot to do with very strong interest in this project, getting an established budget in order to be able to move on. I also think that the nature of the grant funds, there is, the source of the grant funding is, we're not sure. So it could be delayed. We might hope, we hope that it'll be in December. But in order to be able to move forward with the project and have some action on it, there are two established budgets so that we can hopefully have a project soon.
Thank you. I guess just to piggyback off that, so with the $50,000, that would seemingly get us a finished product?
That, yes.
Okay.
Okay. The artists, artists ultimately propose what they feel is within their budget, right? Like we establish the budget and they propose a concept.
All right. And just because we don't get the grant, doesn't mean we don't do the project.
That is the intent of this particular, so that way we at least move forward with having a project, we're starting the action. And then if we don't get the grant, we still have the $50,000 from the Public Art Fund that is moving the project forward.
Great, thank you.
Side.
On the call for artists, one thing I've heard a lot is about, well, if you go back to the success of what we was, the city and C-Web did with the Wharf entry gates, and it was an artist who came in and involved the community, involved youth, and whole community. In this call for the artists, is there a part of that, that you're asking them to look at the possibility of including youth and seniors and other community members into this? Or is it just strictly, or the call for artists just to bring that up themselves and do the project?
So the artists can submit the proposal that fits within the guidelines in the call, which is a relatively simple guidelines. If there was an artist that wanted to submit a proposal for the project and they wanted to include a large community engagement process within the budget that is established for the call, then they would be welcome to do that. And the Art and Cultural Commission could consider that as part of their proposal.
How can we communicate to them? And that be something that potentially the city might be interested, or encourage them to think outside the box, that that might be something, be very intriguing to the city to have another community project like that, that came together, that youth and, you know, what, the part involvement. I mean, when you walk out to the wharf and you see the entry gate, you see people all the day talking about little pieces of glasses they put in, stuff like that, and encourage them, when the Rispin does open, it's another community park to have maybe kids that have worked on it might respect it more and there might be less vandalism, stuff like that. And so I was wondering if that could be an element or a highlight in there, that that's something that we're strongly looking for.
If that is something that we would like to include in the call to artists, that's totally possible.
I'd like to throw that out and see if anybody else has comments on there.
No, I think that's a great idea. I don't have any questions, thanks.
So I'm on the Art and Cultural Commission and everybody at the meeting was really eager, and so that's why we came up with at least the $50,000. One way or another, we want to get it done, whether it's going to be high level or low level or in the middle. But I'm sure the commission will be in favor of, you know, adding that call to the artists about including the public.
I have one more question.
Sure.
So if, I mean, I do think this is a very important feature up there. And, you know, I have pretty high expectations of how this is going to look and how lovely it's going to be. So if, you know, artists don't think that they can come up, I mean, I assume we're going to look at the plans that the artists can come up with and if it's not acceptable to our sort of expectation. I'm assuming that, you know, the Arts Commission could add a bit more money to the project if needed, like if an artist said, oh, for $50,000, you can get this with Home Depot tiles, but if we spend $60,000, you can get this.
Yeah, so in past projects, the Art and Cultural Commission has reviewed proposals based on a call and the budget that was established and felt that the proposals didn't quite match what the vision was, and then went back and reevaluated that call and put it back out for new proposals. So there, just because we establish it at this phase, it doesn't mean that we're committing to any particular project if we don't feel that the proposals are up to what the commission would recommend for the, for the site.
Thank you for that, everyone.
Is the evaluation process that the Arts Commission goes through, looking, so the Arts Commissioners, they look at the dollar of the bid at the same exact time they look at the design or do they look at just design? And they look at both elements when they make those selections?
Yeah, so the call to artists will have artists submit, and with this uniqueness, this is that we're asking them to submit at the two different budget levels, proposals. And the, the commission will look at, once the deadline is passed, look at all the proposals that are submitted. It is typical that they select around three in order to do a level of presentations at the commission level and then move on to making a selection that will go to council for a final approval, much as we have seen in recent times for the Monterey Railing or the Begonia Public Art.
Thank you. Great. So with that, we'll take it to public comment. Welcome.
Thank you. Becky Steinbruner. I spent a lot of time at the Capitola Library and I've been watching the development of this park. It's really a treat to see it looking so good. And I've been interested in what was going to happen with the reflecting pool. So what I would like to propose is that there be some sort of pondless fountain to give the feeling of water there. You can install pondless water features that are not a public nuisance, are not a health hazard. They attract wildlife, birds and things that do come. And it also has the sound of water, which I think is very important, not only for a calming sense, but relating back to the former use of the pond and to help mitigate the noise. It's a very noisy intersection with the three-way stop there. In putting out the call to artists, I really support Councilmember Jensen's effort and focus on getting the community involved. And I want to also request that the parameters are very clear. And I will tell you that I have witnessed public art projects go through this process and what comes out is horrible. Not horrible art, but it doesn't fit. And here's the example, when the Livoke Library Annex was looking for a piece of public art, they got a requirement, a fulfillment, and it was relating to history and that it was the concrete structures that are at the harbor, actually. And nobody knew that the artists knew the history of the area. So, and that there had been a cement plant, actually, in Livoke. And that was what was the connection for the artists, but the public was in an uproar over the issue of concrete and it didn't fit. And so they had to go all the way back to the beginning and it was a lot of money and it was a lot of effort. And what is there now is more fitting of a library, but be very clear with what you want and what you are looking for with this public art. Thank you.
Thank you. See no further public comment? We'll bring it back for deliberation.
I'd like to move the recommended action to adopt the 2025, 2026 budget for the additional $25,000 from the Public Art Fund for a total of $50,000.
I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. D, Mandatory Organic Waste Disposal Reduction Ordinance.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, here for a super exciting item for you this evening to wrap it up. We were talking about mulch, literal mulch. So there are statewide regulations in Senate Bill 1383 that was adopted in 2016. The main goal of 1383 is to combat climate change by keeping edible food and other organic waste out of landfills. Next slide, please. So who's required to comply with these rules? We are, the city, as are all of our residences and businesses. We comply with all these 1383 rules in a number of ways, including having those green bins that allow food waste in your homes, doing edible food recovery with edible food generators at restaurants, and then mulch and recycled paper procurement specifically for the city, which is what we're talking about this evening. Excuse me. So in 2022, CowRecycle, who oversees these mandates for the state, gave every city in the state procurement targets of how much mulch or organic waste products to divert out of the landfills. So you can do that by procuring compost, mulch, renewable energy, if we had trash trucks or some kind of other kind of large vehicles that we could use, or using biomass for electricity. Most of these options aren't available to cities of our size, so what we do is we procure mulch, next slide, please, and use it everywhere. We use it in our parks, we use it in our medians, we use so much mulch. And we are able to meet our annual targets with CowRecycle using this mulch. Fortunately, unfortunately, CowRecycle requires this use of mulch to meet our procurement targets to be codified, which is why we're here this evening. Next slide, please. So earlier this month, we amended our environmental policy to include specifically that we use mulch to meet this procurement target for the city. And then that needs to be referenced in our municipal code, so we are revising Chapter 8.04 to consider this procurement policy into our municipal code. I will also note that this amends the section before it, which is enforcement, to make enforcement still be that last chapter, that text didn't change at all. We are just adding this text to talk about our procurement policy. Next slide. And we're here for the first reading and I am able to answer any questions you may have. And those I am not, our environmental projects manager, who actually manages this for the city, is also here for any questions that might be more detailed.
I have a question.
Thank you, yes, questions, please.
Does the amount of mulch we have to use every year depend on the number of trees that get cut down?
No, it's a, I believe it's a per capita. Yep, per capita.
Okay, thank you.
See no further questions from the council? We'll take it to public comment. We'll take it to public comment. Welcome.
Well, it sounds like a good idea. I don't know about the word mandatory. At my home, I actually have a compost bin. So that's, that's what I do. I'm thinking, let's see, Mandatory Organic Waste Disposal Reduction Ordinance. And I'm thinking of the larger picture of waste disposal in terms of things we can't dispose, like, you know, like all this plastic and everything. Recyclable isn't really recyclable. All the plastic, the microplastics and everything. But the food, you know, however it can be composted, I think it's a good thing. It's just distressing to me how contaminated everything is from geoengineering, the Moss Landing Fire, the microplastics, even in the organic food. It's, it's just very disturbing. I don't, the question is the word mandatory. I don't, I just question that, thank you.
Thank you. See no further questions? We'll bring it back to council.
I will move the Mandatory Organic Waste Recommended Action First Reading.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Jessica, just one question. Do we ever have too much mulch? No, I mean, like, do we ever have like more than we need and that the community can get it? Like when they need sand, do we ever have too much that you need to get rid of?
We don't have that issue here. I believe the landfill does do like free mulch giveaways because the county definitely does. But here in the city proper, no.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Let me scare you, Margot.
Bring us to item B, 2026 City Council Meeting Schedule.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. To close us off tonight, I want to look forward to next year and establish the meeting schedule for 2026. So as a reminder, every year, the city staff prepares a meeting schedule for the following year. We present it to the council for adoption. It's adopted by resolution. Meetings are held on the second and fourth Thursdays of each month at 6:00 PM with a couple of exceptions. Traditionally, one meeting is held in July, August, and December, and the November meeting is moved up due to the Thanksgiving holiday. In addition, the June, July, August, December meetings typically have had earlier start times to accommodate larger agendas. For example, December meetings during election years, we have an earlier start to do some ceremonial activities. And then we have large agendas in the second June meeting, July meeting, and August meeting because we have that break. So for consideration this evening, I have the proposed schedule. This is included in the resolution that was in the agenda packet. I have highlighted on the screen with the asterisks the meetings that typically have the earlier start times. For feedback this evening, we are seeking direction on the summer meeting schedule, confirming that the proposed meeting schedule still meets council's needs. And then also, as an aside, if the council would like to formalize an earlier start time for those summer meetings, we could include that in the formal regular meeting schedule now. Otherwise, we can do it on an as-needed basis when the time comes and advertise those meetings as necessary. With that, the recommended action this evening is to adopt a resolution establishing the regular meeting schedule for 2026, which is really just a short, short time away from now. And I'm available for any questions if needed.
Thank you, questions?
No questions.
Nope, I have no questions. Open it up to public comment. Welcome.
It looks like a fine proposal. I just have a question. It says the city council will hold a special meeting on November 20th, so that's a week from today at New Brighton Middle School Performing Arts Center. What's the purpose of the special meeting?
As soon as we get ready to adjourn, I'll talk about it a little bit. Thank you.
Say it again.
As we get ready to adjourn, I will talk about it. Thank you. Bring it back to the council.
I'd like to move the recommended action. I will second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. And before we adjourn, I would like to talk. Who would you like to discuss? Would you, would you? Would you prefer not having one at all in July and then having the two in August?
I'm just going to interject really briefly. In election years, it is helpful to have an August, a July meeting. Typically, the deadline to place items on the ballot happens right after that July meeting date. And so it is a little bit helpful in election years to maintain a July meeting. Okay.
I really appreciated the summer break. I'd prefer to meet earlier if it's a more robust agenda than to have two meetings.
I agree.
I, I thought we were very rushed, and I, I've heard many comments about the meetings going on so long at night. I would like to have, I could go with the two August, propose the two August, but have the ability to cancel and if needed, if not, if our schedule's not packed. But I think we want to communicate to our community that we have these meetings set up and stuff, and that we can always cancel when if needed.
I'd like to say that it was really nice to have time off. And not all families can go in August or July. So they had a chance to take some time off either one. And as we've seen, when we need, we always have extra meetings. So I would still like to see it kept the same way.
That's fine. It seems like the three of you want to keep it the way it is. So I'm not going to argue.
And like I said, we've always been good about having extra meetings. So do we need to?
No, in that case, the motion stands. You already took a vote, so we are good to proceed.
Great, we're getting ready for adjournment. But before, I'd like to welcome everybody to the October 20th.
Clarification, Madam Clerk. Was there a vote? I know that there was a motion to second.
There was a vote. You're welcome.
Can you just confirm when the start times then, or are they?
The start time, as recommended, was 6:00 PM. We can always adjust the start time as needed as we've done in the past. Sure, it's up to the council's discretion if you'd like to formalize an earlier start time now. It helps for planning purposes. It helps for noticing to the public, so we can definitely do that. So if you'd like, me too, I can amend the resolution language to include that.
I'm fine with the earlier four o'clock start if everyone is okay with that.
Love it.
Right. About to get technical. I thought after you take a vote and you pass a vote and everything, you can't just go back and then change it again? So it looks like we took a vote, and we're going to have them all the way through, one in August, one in July, and they're always starting at six. Is that true? We ran into this before, so.
So the motion was to follow the recommended action. And the recommended action, I would have to?
It's to adopt a resolution establishing the regular meeting schedule.
Okay.
Yeah.
So unless there's a motion to reconsider?
Right.
I'll just clarify, is everybody satisfied?
So just to be clear, right now, the motion is for the same schedule, starting every meeting at 6:00. If you wanted to adjust the summer meeting schedule, we'd need a motion to reconsider. Alternatively, we can adjust the start times.
At the bottom, we can do it.
That's correct.
We can adjust it. We can add them, take away, change time. Have a good night.
All right, let's, let's try to get to that October 20 meeting. Next week, we?
November.
Yeah, already, it's November. Our meeting will be on the 20th. It'll be at New Brighton Middle School. Won't be here in the chambers. And we're going to do a little bit of different format, and I think it should be exciting and very informational. So I look forward to seeing everybody there, Brighton Middle School. Bring this to adjournment.